Okay. Okay. We will come to order here. First item is roll call.
Councilmember Stan Chongian.
President.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember O'Hara is not present at the moment. I will note when he does arrive. Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Here.
And Mayor Ayers.
Here.
All members are present at the moment with the exception of Councilmember O'Hara.
Okay, and the next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise if you can and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item four is Special Presentations and Proclamations. We have three items. The first one, 4A, is Presentation of a Proclamation in Recognition of Veterans Day. And we're doing that today since we don't have a meeting before Veterans Day. So if you'll all join me up here. Thank you. Right up here. So we're very lucky to have a very active American Legion chapter in Encinitas, and we have representatives here to accept the proclamation for Veterans Day. And I'm not a veteran, but I have several family members that are, so I really appreciate your service and what you do, not only as veterans, and you did as veterans, but also what you do with the American Legion Hall here and how you serve the veterans and everybody. So with that, I will read it, and then we will I'll give you a chance if you want to say anything, and then we'll bring the council down. We'll get some pictures, too. With that, Veterans Day Proclamation. Whereas Veterans Day began as Armistice Day, a holiday commemorating the end of World War I, and was established as a national holiday by presidential proclamation and congressional resolution in 1954. And whereas Veteran Day serves as an observance that commemorates our nation's thanks to all branches of the armed forces who have served at home and around the world. And whereas today, we recognize these courageous men and women who represent the best of our nation and community have to offer, and with their service, these veterans have proven that America's freedoms are worth protecting. And whereas through the commitment to freedom and defending the ideals of the Constitution of the United States, our veterans have positively impacted millions of lives and made our country and the world more secure. And the city of Encinitas resolves that their sacrifices will always be remembered. And whereas we honor those who laid down their lives in freedom's defense and made the ultimate sacrifice for our benefit. And whereas our community has a continuing sense of gratitude to those who have given so much in the defense of the freedoms which we all continue to enjoy. And whereas the city of Encinitas strives to make all veterans feel welcome, supported, and at home as they transition from military service to civilian life. And whereas we encourage veterans to take active roles in the community as their unique skills and experience have greatly can greatly contribute to the growth and development of Encinitas. And we offer various leadership opportunities where we can make a difference, where they can make a difference, and be a part of something greater. And whereas our country is forever indebted to our veterans for their courage and exemplary service, now therefore I, Bruce Ayers, mayor of the city of Encinitas, along with all of our city council members, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2025, as Veterans Day in the city of Encinitas. I call upon the citizens of Encinitas to express their thanks and gratitude to all veterans and their families and to join us in supporting our veterans as they transition into our community. Thank you.
I'll make it real quick. I'm the post commander, Dave Questonberry. For those who don't know me, we have a 90-plus-year relationship with the city of Encinitas. Looking forward to another 90 years. We very much appreciate the support. The post is open to everybody. Please come on by at CS 210 West F Street.
Veterans Day celebration?
At 11 o'clock. So come on by, and we'll look forward to seeing you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is item 4B. Presentation of Geographic Information System, GIS 3D model.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Council. My name's Jessica Contreras. I'm the IT Director for the city, and I'm joined today by Megan Cervantes, who supervises our multimedia and spatial intelligence team, Eubalda Raboni, who is an IT analyst with the city, and Scott Drapkin, our Development Services Director. First off, you may be wondering, what is geographic information systems? And what is spatial intelligence? Geographic information systems is truly the science of location, where things are. And then it involves describing things, what things are. So spatial intelligence is the automation that brings that information together in order to make decisions using spatial information. The great thing is the city has a tremendous amount of information that is available to the public through our open data portal, and you can use it to map things or to use map applications. GIS, a lot of people think of it as a map on your phone, or a static map. But really, where the power is, is in the data tables behind the imagery. And that is what is used for analysis. So we refer to this information as layers. And I just wanted to share that because frequently when you're interacting with city geographic data, you're going to be selecting a layer, for example, a street layer. And then you might select a street light layer or a stoplight layer to be able to truly visualize the information. This is a critical component to our ongoing operations at the city. A few ways that we use GIS. First off, we capture parcel and zoning information. We know where lot lines are, parcels. We track our assets, everything from where our streets are to our below-ground infrastructure. We also track information about trail locations. But the most important thing that we really do with this tool is we can track the condition of things behind that or the information about these assets so that we can make decisions. And that is done through the analysis, the spatial intelligence. Some people call it geoanalytics. What will you see before you is a two-day map, just like the type of map a pirate would use. But in this instance, the map has that tabular data, what we call metadata behind it. You can see that the red dot on the map represents a tree. This is a tree at Cottonwood Creek. This is actual, real city information. The type of information we might collect about a tree is, for example, the species of the tree, what date the tree was planted, and information similar to that. With technology evolving at the speed that it has been, we have a much better way of visualizing information, and that's with 3D modeling. And this is our 3D viewer. This viewer we'll share with you is also available to the public from home. This is that same tree information through the 3D viewer. And the reason that we use this type of information at the city is to be able to really look spatially at how things interact with structures, how things interact with our unique topology, and it really helps to visualize. What you'll see further through this presentation is how we can visualize change. This is an example of the viewer that you can access from home. And just so that you're aware of how to use this tool, circled in yellow is the layer selector. So you can go through and select different types of layers, and you can layer, just like a cake, different things on top of each other. So in this instance, we are showing our fire, high-fire zones. The great thing about our 3D modeling, it is included in our existing enterprise license for ESRI. There are multiple tools that are included in that license suite, and this is one that we're using more frequently. Staff can update the model that you see publicly and then also internally with different types of layers. So if there is a need to visualize something, we can add that layer. This modeling has been used internally and now can be used externally as well to make decisions. What I want to share as well is that the way that we gather this 3D structure information is, it used to be with a flight that we coordinated through a collaborative agreement with other agencies in San Diego County, and we used an airplane that was equipped with a special radar called LiDAR. We're now moving to a subscription-based service so we can receive more frequent updates. For example, the last time that flight was done was prior to 2020. We're now on track to where we're going to be able to get these data updates annually through this new subscription service. This is what we're really here today to share as well. The modeling tool that we have, one of them is called ArcGIS Urban. The purpose of this is to really visualize change in a community for planning purposes. And what you're seeing before you is not Encinitas. So I just wanted to share these as illustrations, but I really wanted to convey this isn't Encinitas. We can use this model to visualize either a specific change on a parcel or a community plan and how those changes look across a plan. This allows us to create interactive 3D web scenes, and we can calculate baseline information changes. For example, how many units shift if we change zoning? How many affordable units shift if we change inclusionary rates? How much lot coverage changes if we change zoning? So all of that can be visualized through this tool. What this specific tool does not do currently is it doesn't do a lot of the engineering calculations. There are companion softwares that the engineers use, and in some cases, we can import that data as well into these models. One of the things that's needed to do that is to understand what information is best used to share and visualize that data. And that's really where Development Services expertise lies. And so Scott's here to answer any questions as well with that. These tools, the 3D visualization tool is available online. You can get to it through our Open GIS Data Hub, or you can click "I Want To" from our website and select GIS and Maps, and you'll be able to get into the 3D tool as well as numerous other mapping applications. We also have there what's called a GIS data catalog where you can see all of the data that the city collects and maintains in GIS format. Technology is changing so rapidly. And our spatial intelligence, the reason we named our GIS team Spatial Intelligence is that we're combining machine learning and artificial intelligence through these tools to make spatially-driven decisions. The technology is changing at such a tremendous rate that throughout this year, you will be seeing new tools and new ways of doing things just as we learn to use some of these new items. Thank you so much, and I am here with a great team to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
No, I just wanted to make a comment. I really appreciate this opportunity. This is something that I brought up in August 20th meeting. And I think everybody in the crowd or anybody watching at home that we can see the value of this and the years going forward as to the rapid changes. Obviously, we're in the sixth cycle of housing, and now 2028 will be diving deep into the seventh cycle and more housing. So how we're affected by not just the buildings, the sports fields, everything to traffic circulation, pretty much everything within the day-to-day life of an Encinitas resident. So I want to encourage staff as much as possible in presentations, anything that we get in staff reports or any of that nature, to use this tool as much as possible so that we get better at using this and visualizing our city and talking quite literally the same sheet of music here on this same picture of what we're talking about. But I can't thank you guys enough for bringing this forward. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I really appreciate the fact that the license supports our ability to put it on the web and let citizens and council access it and look at the different layers and use it. So I look forward to playing with it.
I love, I think this is great. I'm really glad we're moving forward with it. It's where we need to go as a city. And I'm really pleased that our IT department is out front working with our planning department, our Development Services, all of our departments really out there, Fire Services and all of this to lead the forefront of this. And so from day one, I think IT is going to be going forward, play a significant role in everything we do here in the city. So thanks for a great presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll with that, we'll move on to item 4C, which is Presentation of Proclamation in Recognition of National First Responders Day on October 28th, 2025. So Sylvester and crew will meet me over there? So this is a proclamation for National First Responders Day, and accepting it is Sylvester Mabry, our Director of Public Works and a part of his crew, or just a couple. So whereas first responders, including public works professionals, firefighters, police officers, emergency medical technicians, 911 operators, paramedics, lifeguards, and other emergency personnel stand on the front lines of our communities, selflessly serving and protecting the citizens of Encinitas in times of crisis. And whereas the first responders respond swiftly and courageously to emergencies, often putting their own lives at risk to ensure the safety and well-being of others, whether in natural disasters, accidents, medical emergencies, or public health and safety threats. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Encinitas to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and other first responder efforts in their respective communities. And whereas, as of 2019, the United States Senate has included language recognizing public works alongside fellow other first responders, now therefore I, Bruce Ayers, mayor of the city of Encinitas, along with all the city council members, do hereby designate October 28th, 2025, as National First Responders Day. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies paying tribute to our public works first responders alongside law enforcement, firefighter, paramedics, lifeguards, emergency medical technicians, 911 operators, and other emergency personnel to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing the quality of life for all. And then I might add on a personal note, I have met many of these people on a rainy, flooding night in Encinitas, wearing my, they know it because they've seen me out there, wearing my boots and the whole bit. So I really appreciate that you're out there on the front line trying to prevent property damage and keeping the city safe from the flooding and other natural disasters that occur. So thank you. Let me present this. Thank you. And then why don't we get the entire council down here? And Sylvester, I'll hand the mic to you.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this proclamation. Emergency response for public works is a multifaceted approach that involves infrastructure restoration, debris management, and also support of our fire and sheriff's departments. We're often the first ones in and oftentimes last ones out during a natural disaster. Up here with me tonight are analysts and managers from public works who are responsible for training and also providing our staff with tools and equipment to be efficient. So I want to thank them for their leadership. And with that, we do have a little slideshow to show our staff in action within our city.
Thank you. Thank you for all you guys do. We appreciate it. Our next item is Oral Communications. Oral communications are comments for items that are not on tonight's agenda. We allocate up to 30 minutes for oral communications at the beginning of our regular meetings. Speakers typically are granted three minutes to address the council with no time donations permitted. The chair has the authority to modify or limit the duration of those comments so long as they are done, it's done equitably. And as stated in Policy 003, that specifies the conduct of our meetings, oral comment slips will be accepted by the city clerk in the council chambers. No earlier than 30 minutes, but all communication, oral communication request slips must be received by the clerk by the start of oral communication. So how many do we have?
We do have 13.
13. So, oh boy, we're right on the edge there. So usually if we get 15 or more, I'll go to two minutes. I'll go with three, because we don't have that bad of an agenda, I hope, and we'll go there. Any comments from, is that okay with everybody? Okay, I got thumbs up. So three minutes and all 13 in the front here.
The first three, Molly Hanleyan, Dave Dean, and then Madison Rapp.
Good evening, Council. Whoops, wait. Hold the phone.
Do you have a presentation? Is that what you're waiting for?
Good evening, Molly Hanleyan, District 2. I want to talk about red light cameras. There's a history. In 2004, many of you may remember, in 2005, when they were installed, I didn't move to the city until 2011, and I got my first red light camera ticket in 2012. So in June, I did some research because I wanted to know, why did we pull them? And what I found was a very interesting council update in 2013 where the council and staff, the staff brought a report to the council to review the progress and the positive outcome of the contract of having red light cameras. The contract was written for a very long time because they got cost benefits. So it went until 2018. And in 2018, it was extended for another 18 months until May 2020. And in May 2020, it was during Zoom time and COVID, so maybe they thought that we didn't need red light cameras anymore. So it was voted out by Blakespear, Hubbard, and Mosca. So Kelly Enzi and Tony voted it in. What I want for research for what is going on now in 2025, there have been so many improvements, the automated there have been so many improvements, the automated enforcement technology. There are speed detecting cameras that can issue tickets, so issuing a ticket to an offending driver with a hope to prevent an accident. Prevention is what we need. Awareness and driver behavior change is what we need. Accountability, and it's not safe to have the sheriff stationed in a busy intersection, putting their lives at risk. What I learned from the 2013 presentation was it took two staff, two sheriff detail to monitor an intersection, one in one direction and one in the other. So they'd have to radio each other. That's not productive. Our sheriff cannot be, our sheriff patrol can't be everywhere all the time. And it's a growing concern here as the city grows. Presentation. I'm sharing a clip from Captain Healy where he spoke to--
The public safety aspect of this system?
Let me just start by saying that I've received a red light ticket in Escondido, and I still believe in the program strongly. I think as a department, we do. The statistics clearly show there's a reduction in collisions.
I'm running out of time, so I basically want to ask the council to ask our current captain, our sheriff captain Watts, his opinion. Have the council direct staff to review and agendize. This is a future topic.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Dave Dean, Dave's Rock Garden. The reason I'm here, last week, we heard some amazing numbers by Captain Watts and the accomplishments they've had the last year, and I salute those amazing job done by them. What I have for you today is just three different individuals who were sleeping on the streets in Encinitas from Friday night to Sunday morning. And one was here at Moonlight Beach. The next one was unfortunately at the Rock Garden. And then lastly, the third one was in front of the CRC. So anyway, that's this weekend's activity, and they've done a great job with the sheriffs, but we always have to stay vigilant when it comes to community safety. So Captain Watts, wherever you may be at the moment, please continue to sharpen your pencil and do great work like done in the past. Lastly, I just want to thank Councilman Schaefer and Mayor Ayers for meeting with us this week. We had a fun, enlightening conversation on how we might be able to come together as a community to celebrate our 250th birthday next year. So with the Legion and help of community and people, we might be able to make a nice tribute to our country and salute our flag. And under that, I'll bid you a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Madison Rapp, followed by Suzanne Stone, Rem Gonzalez, and then Greg Young.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Ayers and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Madison, and I'm here as a parent and community member to share important new research that has serious implications for the health and safety of youth in Encinitas. A 2025 peer-reviewed study published in Substance Use and Misuse, led by researchers from USC, Kaiser Permanente, and others, analyzed data from nearly 100,000 California teens. And here are some of the really important and interesting findings. In communities that banned both marijuana storefronts and delivery, rates of psychotic disorders among teens were 67% lower. Teens who lived more than 20 minutes from a marijuana retailer experienced 47% fewer psychotic disorders than those living within five minutes. And even where only delivery was banned, anxiety disorders dropped by 93%. These numbers make one thing clear. Proximity to marijuana retail has a serious impact on youth mental health. When marijuana businesses are nearby, youth mental health suffers. But when communities set boundaries, kids are better protected. Encinitas is a city that prides itself on being family-friendly, health-conscious, and forward-thinking. I urge you to take this idea seriously in light of the four marijuana storefronts in Encinitas. And remember that youth should have as large a buffer as possible from these types of businesses as you consider future decisions around marijuana retail and delivery. Let's make sure our policies truly support youth mental health, protect families, and preserve the character of our neighborhoods. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Suzanne Stone, and I'm here to ask that you address a crisis that persists in our community. As many of you saw last Wednesday, a local resident was threatened by a masked, armed man as she observed immigration actions at Sunshine Gardens. A masked agent ran a man down across lanes of oncoming traffic, zapped him multiple times with a stun gun incapacitating him, forcibly dragged him down a flight of concrete stairs, and took him away. Later, that detained person was released. He's a U.S. citizen. He was released with no charges and with no information or idea of why he was detained. This is not targeted immigration enforcement. This is excessive brutality. On September 17th, youth, this council passed a resolution directing the city to take seven actions to increase our safety in the face of ongoing and increasingly violent execution of immigration actions in Encinitas. Among those actions were to launch a Know Your Rights campaign in English and Spanish, to submit Freedom of Information Act requests in an attempt to gain facts about immigration actions, and to identify other legal mechanisms available to the city, including pursuing a cooperative MOU with the Department of Homeland Security. To date, the only progress visible to the public is the Know Your Rights campaign information that's on our website. The community doesn't feel any more safe today than they did on September 17th, when the resolution was passed. And we need action, and we need transparency. To increase transparency and ensure community understands the actions being taken to protect our rights, I respectfully request that the city manager include an update on each of the seven action items at each council meeting in their report. This will allow everyone to know what's being done, what's been successful, what's failed, and where we might need to pivot and find other solutions for our community. Obviously, the city is limited in the power it has to assert control over federal actions or demand personal accountability for brutal excessive use of force by federal agents. But it's absolutely within your local control to communicate the results of the actions on this matter to your worried and scared constituents. Thank you for your time tonight.
Hi, I'm Greg Young, and that was wonderful timing for what I want to talk about. I'm going to continue what I spoke to the council one week ago about my concerns about election security coming up on the 4th when we vote on Proposition 50. And what I spoke about was a real focus on ICE, perhaps there will be present. And what we just heard was a pretty good example of why we should take this seriously. Up until now, I think nobody really considered this a possibility. Now, obviously, it can happen. There's no reason to think that they will stay away from the polls, especially if they are urged to interfere and intimidate voters. What I'm asking, and I was promised that I would get a reply, which I did not, asking about some policies and procedures to follow to help guide me, I want to work in a positive way where identifying if there is intimidation being observed, focusing primarily if ICE were to show up, and then what the proper course of action would be to take. Obviously, it needs to be reported. Who, if I'm there and I see it, who do I report it to? I have the right and ability to go ahead and call directly to the sheriff's office. Or if it's serious, I could make the decision, call 911. But I also want to know what is happening with the city council. Other cities have had far more dramatic and serious problems with ICE encounters, and specifically LA, Portland, Chicago, New York. We've seen a lot of this on the news. And front and center is the mayor. There are people representing the city. I'm not casting blame. What I'm suggesting is that the presence of the city council in this issue helps bring the community together, helps give us a sense of belonging and our ability to actually do something. And if nothing, at least report it. Know what's going on, draw attention to it, and have community forums where we can talk about these types of things. So, just so everybody knows, it is a felony if any officer of the law shows up at a poll unless they're there to vote or respond to an incident. If even a car parked in the neighborhood nearby can be interpreted as intimidation, it's a felony crime punishable by imprisonment and fines. And in addition to that, if an officer is armed, carrying arms, it's a separate felony with equally strong ramifications. So we need to understand that this is real, and I plan on being there, and I'd like some guidance so I can work with the community and--
And I can't respond to it because of the open meeting laws, but I can make sure that you're, is your contact information with the clerk so that the city manager can make sure you get a response?
Okay. I was told that last week, and I'm optimistic it will happen.
And all I'm asking is to make sure that they have your contact information. You have it? Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker is Rem Gonzalez, Stuart Donaldson, Laura Grimmer, and then Chris Giles.
My name is Ramiro Gonzalez. I'm proud to have been an Encinitas resident for 21 years. I have loved every minute of it, and I hope to remain here for the rest of my life. Recently, my granddaughter moved in with us, so my future in this city may last beyond me. I'm also proud to have served in our armed forces as a door gunner in a helicopter in Vietnam. I'm decorated with the Purple Heart and a Bronze Star with a V for Valor. Many people honor veterans for their service, even more so when veterans continue to serve the public after military service. We have a veteran serving as a city council member right now. Surely, part of the reason he was elected was because of the service, of his service to our country. I want to remind you all that your service to our city comes with responsibility. You are in leadership positions. Your decisions affect a lot of people. When one of you ignores your responsibility, it shines a light on you all. Mr. Schaefer is facing serious criminal charges. The stress on him and his family must be enormous. It is surely putting stress on all of you. While I thank Mr. Schaefer for his service as a combat veteran and a resident of Encinitas, I find his behavior disappointing, extremely alarming. If the allegations regarding the parking spot and the kid's bike are true, the lawsuit by Bank of America, your call to bring rifles to a construction site, et cetera, if they are all true, for any of you, you should not be on a city council. Mr. Schaefer, your behavior is unbecoming of an officer and an elected official, and I would hope you are utilizing the VA for support. I implore you to resign from the council to focus on resolving the issues that, yours, and not to make them ours. Thank you.
And I want to interrupt just one thing. I want a little bit of clarification, and I'm going to look to the city attorney to help me here. We have a policy that has both, I'll call them rules and guidelines. And one of the guidelines is not to denigrate people, to speak to the whole council, not to an individual council member. And it's a guideline, not necessarily a hard rule. And it runs into First Amendment rights. So one of the things, and you can go sit down, I just want to make clarity, because I think a lot of people are thinking this right now. And it really comes down to, where is that line for our rules of what can, if it's a bona fide city issue that involves just one person on the council? My assumption has been First Amendment right trumps that policy. Now, if it is just vitriol aimed at a, at a single council member and not founded in fact, not, no basis, there's where I think the guideline kicks in. Can you give me guidance on that?
Thank you, Mayor Ayers. First Amendment protections for speaking at public meetings are fairly broad. So it is a fine line, and certainly a judgment call, what crosses the line between permissible First Amendment speech into impermissible hate speech or speech really outside the bounds of protected speech.
Okay, so allowing what just happened, I viewed that as being First Amendment primarily, and therefore allowed it. And I wanted to explain that so people understood. I'm not responding to the comments. I'm not even commenting on the comments, but I'm talking about our procedural process here. And if somebody later gets up and picks on one of us, and it's strictly personality, strictly, no, having nothing to do with city business, I will cut it off. So, thank you.
I concur. I concur with your analysis.
Okay, very good. Thank you. With that, we can continue.
Stuart Donaldson, Laura Grimmer, Chris Giles, and then Cynthia Shea Palmer.
Good evening, council members, mayor. My name is Stuart Donaldson. I live on Crest Drive in Encinitas, have done so since 1962. I am also here in support of what Greg Young spoke about with respect to potential ICE presence at the polls. ICE and the FBI and the DEA and any other three-letter federal agency you care to mention have absolutely no role in enforcing voter rights at the polls. That is the responsibility of the poll workers who work behind the scenes but judge whether a person is entitled to vote or not. So if federal agencies are present at the polls, I can only assume it's to intimidate potential voters. And as Greg pointed out, intimidation doesn't have to be inside the polling area. It doesn't have to be within 100 feet of the polling area. It can be anywhere in the vicinity of the polls. And we have seen what ICE is capable of doing in our own community and around the country. So I think this is a very, very real potential. Hopefully, it will not happen. But what I need to know is what the city council position is. Should ICE appear at the polls, what will the city council do in the moment that that happens? Should it happen? Should there be any form of voter intimidation anywhere in the city, whether it's at a drop-off point or at a polling location? Now, I sincerely hope that there won't be any problems at the polls. But hope is not a strategy. We need to plan for the worst. And I would suggest that the city council contact the sheriff's department at a minimum and tell them that they are to respond to any form of voter intimidation that happens within our city bounds. And I would also ask that the city council be willing to commit to go to a situation, if it is reported to you, that this is happening. It is a felony. It is a felony for any officer to intimidate voters. It's a felony for me to intimidate a voter. And if I'm carrying arms, that's a separate felony, as Greg pointed out. So it's a serious issue. I hope it doesn't happen, but we need a policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I just wanted to come up. I'm Laura Grimmer. I'm part of Safe Streets Encinitas. And I wanted to just extend, on behalf of the group, thank you to Deputy Mayor Lyons, Councilmember O'Hara, for coming to our inaugural event on Sunday. We were really pleased to have your support and to have opportunities to interact with you outside of council chambers. you outside of council chambers, and I know a lot of the citizens that were there felt the same way. We look forward to getting to work with you all more in the future. And also, to Councilmember San Antonio, our sincere thanks for donating our beautiful banners. We were really excited to hang those and kind of spread the word. I think the banners and the signs attracted people at the park that weren't even there. So, thank you all. And again, we look forward to continuing to work with you to effect positive change.
Thank you.
I'm Chris Giles, District 2. And hello, mayor, deputy mayor, and council members. As we stand before you and advocate for safe bike infrastructure tonight, and will continue to do so for years to come, it's important that our advocacy isn't perceived as a bikes versus cars issue. When we advocate for safe bike infrastructure, we are advocating for a choice. A choice for people who, if physically able or have a desire, want to ride a bike rather than drive an automobile. A choice for people who need to ride a bike to improve their health or for transportation to work or school. But this isn't only about cyclists. Creating safe bike infrastructure also benefits people who prefer to or are required to drive. Each bike trip removes a car from our streets. Removing cars reduces traffic congestion, which you well know burdens our streets. By giving people who want or need to ride a bike for transportation a safe choice in mobility, we reduce congestion for all the people who don't have a choice but to drive, like veterans who have to go to the doctor's office, or a mother who wants to drive to visit her grandkids, delivery drivers, trade workers that we rely on for our basic needs. And maybe most importantly, reduced congestion allows our first responders to respond more quickly to Encinitas residents who are in need or danger. Safe bike infrastructure isn't a zero-sum issue where one group gains and another loses. When we make streets safer for people on bikes, we make streets work for everyone. By adopting and developing safe infrastructure for cyclists, we can create a mobility network in Encinitas that gives people a choice, benefiting all users of our streets, cyclists and motorists alike. Thank you.
Thank you.
Following Cynthia is Bernie Dillon and Karen Caden.
Good evening, council. Thanks for giving me the time. I do want to talk about Clark Apartments and safety. I know Clark Apartments is on later. This is a different topic. So, this is a recap. I've talked about this before, but just real quickly, this has always been an issue with this site. And very quickly, 2017, there was an issue. You know, Bruce, you're nodding your head. 2022, Traffic Mobility folks looked at it. They put out a letter. They outlined lots of things about safety, fire response, street improvements, and they even got to the point where they said they would recommend that the site be modified. Anyway, that got hijacked. Western Law Group came in. We never saw anything and basically completely ignored. And then, the Planning Commission was denied based on objective standards, and then the city council approved it. Okay. So, it was approved based on the fact that there was-- all the objective standards were followed. Fast forward to today, with the help of AI, we now know that there is an objective standard that is not being followed. It's a critical one. It's 24 feet, unobstructed width. This is all recap. They failed compliance all streets, everyone, all of them. 16 to 18 feet is all that is there from an unobstructed perspective. That's parking. That's trash cans. And so, the streets need to be 33% wider. It is a dangerous, serious design flaw. So, fast forward to today, this is our reality now. Construction has started. We have a lot of construction folks going, construction trucks going through, one after another. It is not safe for the most people living on that street, for any of us getting through there. It's a design flaw, serious design flaw. So, my ask here is who is going to sign off on safety? We're adding 1,000 new residents lodged, crammed in the back of our neighborhood and lodged against the freeway. The roads, we know, are 33% too small according to the fire codes, both state and Encinitas. I want to know, and our neighbors want to know, who has final authority that this is safe? Not a bureaucracy, but an individual who signs their name, almost like a professional engineer who signs off on the document. So, we know that individual has reviewed it, and that individual declares that it is safe. These are lives that we're talking about, and we deserve that. Clear accountability, that is the ask. And until there is clear accountability and until it is signed off, the project should be stopped. We shouldn't be seeing it built in an area that we know is not safe. So, that is the ask. Hold off on permits until that accountability is clear. Thank you.
Wow, I feel like I haven't been here in ages. Good evening, Mayor Illers and city council members. My name is Bernie Dillon, and I live in Cardiff by the Sea. There is an anger and hatred and lawlessness that is growing like a cancer all over our streets. The lawless are testing we, the people, the city council, and most importantly, the Sheriff's Department. During a short period of time, less than a week, three different incidents of people walking our streets armed. Our neighborhoods armed, two in Cardiff and one by the CRC. 629 Santa Fe Drive is directly behind my home. At 10:00, there was a helicopter flying over so low, it's bent my avocado trees to the side, looking for this armed individual who was hiding at 629 Santa Fe Drive, armed. Now, the wonderful Sheriff's Department, they did get him, threw his butt in jail, thank God. But I did not sleep all night, wondering, is he coming over our fence? Needless to say, my house has not got more cameras on it than probably all of Encinitas. On Santa Fe Drive, an E-bike was hit right at Santa Fe Drive in McKinnon on 10-9. A black truck drunk driver plowed into the Gillette Building, pinning a child and breaking his arm, tough kid. That same car, road rage, hit the back of a white car and completely smashed it in. A black SUV laid on its horn because it believed there was only one right-hand turn onto Encinitas Boulevard from Via Cantabria, almost hit me. The driver was eating an ice cream cone and at the same time flipping me off and cussing me out. People continued to speed on Santa Fe Drive, 33 miles per hour, 47 miles per hour, 56 miles per hour, trying to beat that red light and plow right in front of the school. They're not slowing down. They're going faster. Table conditioning, there are more injuries on Santa Fe Drive with bikes than before the changes. I watch people running red lights, not stopping at stop signs. Road rage, if you're the person that stops for that red light, or if you stop completely for that stop sign. People are beeping behind you, yelling at you to move. I'm not sure who said it. You cannot control people. You are correct. You cannot-- however, you can give serious consequences for bad behavior in the form of speeding tickets, running red lights, and not making a complete stop at stop signs. We don't have enough police officers to govern every street, side street, by street, and highway. We need these cameras, and they need to be put up, the faster the better, to start issuing consequences for people who deliberately choose not to obey the law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I have a couple small issues. I have one regards to Pyrrhus Point. It's on the corner of Pyrrhus and Plato. I just want to make a note, and I have called the Planning Department, and I asked, can you please call a developer to put a no trespassing sign on their property? There's kids up there doing bike jumps. They're running through the area where net catchers are and California plants. So, we have not received any response yet. It had been two weeks ago that we called. Next subject, I would like, if it can be possible, to keep clear written on the road where Encinitas Boulevard and Vulcan meets. It is a mess every day. I know you all been on there. Everyone probably in this town has been on there, and we would like to have it clear for safety, for our sheriffs, and for the fire department. Next is, thank you very much during your jurisdiction that we got Luke City Boulevard done. It's really fun driving on it now, all the way down to Saxony, because there's always bumpity bump to Saxony, especially when you're in a truck. But I hope that you will continue the black top towards I-5. It hasn't not been done yet. And this, you know, improving our infrastructure is so great for our economy and for the quality of life of all of us living here. And I want to thank you all for being here and helping us be a better Encinitas. Thank you.
Thank you.
That does conclude public speakers.
Okay. Thank you. We did not have a closed session to report from, and are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the posted agenda. And then, moving to the consent calendar, item 8D has been pulled by a member of the public.
Okay. And would anybody, any of the council like to pull any items? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve everything but 8D.
Second.
I need a--
Motion to approve.
I think Joy got there first, and then Marco preempted it all with the second before the first. So, with that, we've got a motion and a second for everything but 8D. If we can call a question and vote.
Motion carries unanimously. That takes us to item 8D. And the speaker is Cynthia Shea-Palmer.
And Cynthia, would you like a staff report for 8D? It's up to you. If you need it, we are happy to do it.
I don't know the whole process.
Just, yeah, come on up, and we'll take public speakers and 8D, and then we'll deliberate, and then we will vote to do whatever.
All right. So, my name's Cynthia Shea-Palmer, and first, I want to thank, you know, Councilman O'Hara and Traffic and Jennifer Campbell for meeting with our neighborhood on 8D. So, my intent is not to hijack it. We like where it's going, but just have a little bit of input. So, can you show it real quick? Okay. So, we like it, but we think there's one flaw, and that is a stop sign right there coming out of the development. And that is because, you know, we had 80 double trailer trucks in a window of five hours coming out of there, and the neighborhood's getting hammered. So, we need them to also stop, basically. That's my main ask. And a couple other things that I'd like you to make note of is this is also that corner. You're looking at the development. You see how all those cars are parked there? Those are subs. Those are subcontractors. So, we can't get by there. You know, I'm driving in, trying to make that corner, and I'm looking at a subcontractor looking at me, and he's looking at his phone, probably answering phone calls. So, it's just not working. We got to make sure all the staging, all the parking happens on there. 6.6 acres, not in our neighborhood, not stopped on that corner. So, that's another ask. I know, so, this ask is for oversight, and you guys are the big bosses. So, the oversight comes from you guys to the developers. The developers have to have oversight on their subs, and they have to have continuous monitoring, because when nobody's watching, they don't do what they're supposed to do. Okay? And another real quick ask is, there is a lot of data in that report. We need 15 miles an hour to 20 miles an hour in our neighborhood. It's insane. 25 is insane. Down below are pictures of number of streets in Encinitas that have 20 miles an hour. And when you look at the difference at the top, which is Clark, and you've got all that obstruction going on, and it's very busy, 25 is just too fast. So, again, my intent isn't to hijack the stop signs. The intent is just to add.
Okay.
That's all. Thank you very much for all your time.
Councilmember O'Hara.
So, I was going to pull this item anyway. First off, I do want to start off by, you know, I think Clark, the Clark Apartments are a turd sandwich, and anything we do is putting mustard or mayo or pickles on it, but that's better than a turd sandwich by itself. So, I want to take a moment to thank the city manager and for staff for taking the time to listen to the residents who, and thank the residents for showing up to speak with them, to acknowledge the importance of this intersection. This is one of the most important intersections that were mentioned in the discussion we had, and I'm really pleased that staff acted on this. So, I think that's really important, that bridge. The city here is U-Clark Avenue. That's the best I can say. We are looking at this. It's my understanding, I have just a couple of questions on this, that what we're looking at here is the final, is the current stop sign configuration for permanent stop signs, and that there's not one there at the current time because it's not yet a permanent road exit. Is that correct? It's still a construction site?
Correct. That is correct, council member.
So, we'll go back afterwards and review putting in, before they open, putting a stop sign in there?
We probably don't need to do that. I got to double-check the conditions or approval. It could be a condition on the developer to just add that a stop sign when the project is complete, so we might not even need to come back.
Okay. So, if there isn't one, we can make sure that we ask them.
Absolutely.
Can you clarify the question about parking for the contractors, subcontractors on the
I probably missed that while I was walking here.
So, there were questions about the rules regarding where the contractors can park and how can we mitigate their effect on the neighborhood? Is there a rule set up where they're supposed to park on a certain site or a certain location? Can we address that?
So, Councilmember O'Hara, unfortunately, that would be a question for the Development Services Department, so I'll absolutely coordinate with them on a response for you.
Okay. So, let's follow up on that, and I'll get back to the residents through the city manager, hopefully, please, if that's okay. And then, with regards to changing speed limits, how would that work in this neighborhood at this time?
So, there is a new batch of AB-43 streets that is coming to council in the next couple of months, probably in February. We do have the list analyzed and evaluated. It's just that we did a citywide speed survey of our streets, and we want to mix those two items together because AB-43 impacts our speed surveys. So, the speed surveys are not 100% complete, but AB-43 list is complete, and one of the streets that staff will be recommending lowering from 25 to 20 is Clark and--
Oh.
Okay. Perfect. And on the other streets in that neighborhood, they can petition, we can work with residents to petition if they want to look at the other streets as well?
Correct. We have a council blessed process for adding streets to the AB-43 list for additional five mile reduction. If we are going from 25 to 20, there's a process that council blessed last year, I believe.
Okay. All right. So, I'm in a motion approval of this. I hope it's unanimous with the addition of a stop sign, long-term plans to have a stop sign either installed by developer if it's on the plans, or followed up with us putting a fourth stop sign in there.
I will second that. Are you done?
I'm done. You have the floor, I'm sorry.
Great. Question, and so typically, when you have a new development or you have a driveway onto that it's really a road driveway, a private road meeting a public road, the requirement is to stop, especially at a pseudo-intersection like this. So, I think, would somebody get a ticket if they basically came full bore right out into there? They should have stopped, right? When they enter the roadway, as it's called in the DMV.
Yeah, absolutely. Anytime you come from a driveway, no matter what-- Anytime you come from a driveway, no matter what the control at that intersection, or even if it's a road, that you come out of your own driveway, you don't have the right of way, the right of way belongs to the person on the road and on the main road. That being said, I do agree that, that it's a good idea to reemphasize that, and I can talk to our engineer in charge of the permit, because that is something that we can address with our traffic control for their construction permit.
That's exactly where I was going.
So we can add it even before the developer is complete.
I was going to ask for a sawhorse reflector stop sign there, even, so as a friendly amendment to your motion, I would like to see an immediate stop sign there, because it is confusing. We're adding the three other stop signs, and the, the incorrect assumption would, could be that the driver's coming out of, they think, oh, I don't have a stop, and everyone else does. And I would like to see it from day one, from, you know, as soon as we can, get a temporary stop sign there when we put in the other three, and make it safe. So that's one. And I got a nod, so I'm going to take that as a yes to the motion. And then the parking by the corner, kind of similar situation, because you could see in the photo you made, you were walking, so you didn't see the photo, but two big contractor trucks parked right there on the west side across the street from the entrance. Is it possible as part of the construction permitting to add, in addition to the sawhorse stop sign, add a no parking for 40 feet or 35 feet, something like that, so that the intersection remains clear? Because there's a lot of large truck traffic coming through there, and having the, what we saw in the photo, which I can imagine is just typical, so that we can have that during the construction phase, no parking there?
I'm sure if you're saying west, Adelaide Circle is, let me go to staff VC. Adelaide, Adelaide Circle is a private road. If the picture was for Publa, it's a lot easier.
I think it was actually, actually, the, the picture I saw looked like it was the west side of Clark, just north of the intersection, and that, that they were parking trucks right there, and since the truck traffic is using Clark, and the residents are all having to use Clark, it really makes it difficult to, to have the stop sign there, too. So at least during the, this phase, and we can talk about what we do permanently, but I would do no parking for, I'm going to say 40 feet along that north edge.
Do you have that picture available, just to confirm what we're talking about?
Yeah. That's a good idea, that way, that way Abe can see it, too.
I would also like to remind everybody that we do have a state daylighting law, so within 20 feet of an intersection, we have the ability to enforce through our sheriff's office ticketing, and if any vehicle, construction or otherwise is parked within 20 feet, the sheriff's office can assist us with ensuring that those are ticketed and dealt with appropriately.
Yeah, and my, just to continue with my comment while we get the picture up there. The, the geometry of the temporary construction intersection is there's a slight offset on that construction road, and the, and that's why, and then parking two cars there makes it worse, makes it exaggerated worse, yeah, so.
Is it?
Yeah. Yeah, you can see how, you can't even see the straight ahead lane in to the construction site, so, you know, I, let me put, let me make one more addition to the motion, which would be to look, have at the discretion of the traffic engineer, include during construction phase, no parking along that side until the intersection is fully improved. And, and ultimately, I leave it to your judgment, but my intent was about 40 feet, so at least those two car lengths we're seeing there.
I mean, 20 feet of no parking will immediately appear as soon as we add the crosswalk, as our director mentioned, it's now the state law.
20, 20 feet, well, I'm talking...
It's automatically added. The extra 20 would be what I would evaluate.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you. So if that's acceptable...
Absolutely.
Okay, cool. Let's see, member, Councilmember San Antonio.
I was going to suggest we put the stop sign at the construction site as well, so.
Okay, very good.
You hit it on the head, so.
And Deputy Mayor Lines.
Yes, I want to just say I support this item, so I'm happy to support it. I want to use this opportunity to also say that I'm hearing that there's a lot of other concerns about circulation and safety associated with this development. And we have housing element, infrastructure projects that we've proposed in the past that I've suggested we bring forward again. And if we want to add the widening of Clark as an opportunity for us to consider as a potential future housing element-associated infrastructure project, I would be in favor of that. That's it, I'll conclude.
Okay. I don't see anybody else wanting to speak. Could the city clerk read back?
Okay, this is what I have. So the motion was by Councilmember O'Hara, seconded by Mayor Ayers, and that was to adopt staff recommendation with the addition of a permanent fourth stop sign at the conclusion of development if it is not a condition of improvement. That's the first one. The second one was to install, to immediately install a temporary stop sign during the construction phase, and a no parking sign on the west side of Clark Avenue, north of the intersection, and to give the traffic engineer discretion to install an additional 20 feet of no parking.
I think the, since we're, it's actually two different additions. The one addition is the temporary stop sign during construction end.
I got that one.
The next one is discretion for the, the traffic engineer to put approximately 40 feet of no parking on the north, sorry, to the north of the intersection on the west side of Clark. But ultimately, we leave it to his judgment.
Okay. On the north?
Just a quick clarification, discretion in there would be if you go out and you see on the south side, they've now decided since we're not parking on the north side, we're going to park on the south side, you would also add that.
We'll look at the entire intersection, all lakes, please, yeah.
Just make it safe.
So discretion for 40 feet, 40 feet of no, of no parking on both sides of the intersection.
On potentially both sides, yeah.
Okay.
During construction, too. And then ultimately, once it's all fully improved as an intersection, your judgment.
Okay.
Okay, we call a question?
Not, motion carries unanimously.
Great.
Takes us to 10A.
Takes us to, yeah, item 10A. And 10A is appropriate highway safety improvement program, HSIP, cycle 12 grant funds and city matching funds for four capital projects. And the contact person is city traffic engineer Bandigan. So we'll start with a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, Abe Bandigan, city traffic engineer. This is a presentation on our highway safety improvement program, cycle 12 grant projects. A little bit of background on this, September last year, after a direction we received from the city council at that time in August, we applied, we submitted four applications to the state for the cycle 12 of the highway safety improvement program. These four locations, corridors, were selected based on the program criteria and the program language, and their scoring criteria. This is, as, as the, as the name suggests, is a 12th, 12th cycle. And the consultant and the staff, the consultant who prepared the application for us and the staff had a lot of experience with this program, with the scoring criteria, so these were selected with a high chance of being awarded. On February, we were lucky enough to receive award letters from Caltrans that all four of our applications, we were obviously one of the top applicants in the state, that were able to, to be able to award it all of our applications. We did conduct some preliminary evaluations, but because the majority of the council had not seen these applications, when we submitted the applications, they were reviewed preliminarily by council at the time. We brought them back today to review again by council, to authorize us to proceed applying to Caltrans to start the design. We're nowhere near, you know, the design that we haven't started official design. We have some sketches, and some concepts, and some ideas today that we'll discuss, but the timing of this, this is an aerial that shows the location, it's Encinitas Boulevard, a small corridor, a small segment of the corridor of El Camino Real, and then south of Cardiff area between the border of the Solana Beach and our Cardiff State Beach entrance. The timing, as I mentioned, oh, sorry, yeah, I forgot. The timing of the project, May last year, the release of the program, August, council approved authorization to apply, February was the announcement that we were awarded all four. We're at the concept, alternative planning, and the design phase, assuming we receive direction from council tonight to proceed, there's a month and a half, two-month process with Caltrans to get authorization to start the design. We will have to submit a package to Caltrans that basically secures the funds, and the city basically commits that we want to start the design. And then within a year, year and a half, we'll have another rounds of community meeting, traffic commission meeting, city council review, stakeholder meetings, and hopefully with, by, by summer 2027, or maybe earlier, if we're, if we have a good headway, we can come back to council for the second authorization, which would be going to Caltrans and saying, we're good with our design, we're ready to proceed, provide us the funding for construction. That would be the, the next time that we need authorization from Caltrans. The first project, the title of the project and the, so a little bit of background, each grant has its core countermeasure identified in the grant that Caltrans scores projects based on those countermeasures. And while these can be changed by requesting a scope change to Caltrans, the chances of convincing Caltrans that this is project is, still has the same merits as it had when you, when we competed against other cities and other projects would be lower. If we keep the core countermeasure in place, minor deviations into the scope that was presented originally to Caltrans would be a lot easier to present to Caltrans, because we're keeping the safety element that was presented in the application in place. Now, it's not impossible, as said, to even change the countermeasure. The original project was, as originally proposed, installation of bollards at Encinitas Boulevard, east of Cali Magdalena, all the way to Belour and maybe even via Canterbury. We don't need internet, I guess, right? Internet is unstable. We did some preliminary, preliminary evaluations, we created some concepts, these were presented to Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission. At that point, Mobility's Commission, Mobility Commission's suggestion and recommendation was to add a third lane with some turn pockets and some narrow travel lanes, but not to install flexi-posts where there is narrow bike lane buffers. But they were okay with adding bollards, flexi-posts where we had wider buffers, which would still meet the criteria of the grant, but the idea was to add a third lane and some turn pockets. We have some proposed improvements, as said, these are not final, these are concepts, and some alternatives, where we, we still have the option of having additional alternatives if we want to evaluate. But the idea that we have right now is to widen the bike lanes and buffers to allow for adding the flexi-posts. We can maximize the spacing if we want to use less of these flexible posts. We do not recommend adding additional vehicle lanes, and the existing curb locations will remain the same, we're not touching concrete, we're not modifying sidewalk. This is a, a sample, an existing section. This can be like west of Quell Gardens, there are various segments, there, there is not a single cross-section that's similar all the way. There are various different, I think we have nine or 10 different cross-sections, but this is a sample and how it would look like. A bike lane will now be wider, there will be a wider buffer where there is non-existent, we can even add buffers where it's non-existent, or widen existing buffers, and then all the travel lanes, we're bringing them to 11. But there are some travel lanes that are wider, we're not going below 11 on this road. This is another cross-section east of Quell Gardens. As you can see, we have a wide two-way left turn lane, and we can modify by adding bollards and, and flexible posts in between the buffer. We will be adding, due to some congestion that we have, we, we are suggesting some additional right turn pockets at St. John at Belour that would provide some relief from congestion, help with minimizing delay along the corridor, and it would have some flow-enhancing effect. The second project is El Camino Real from Willow Spring to Avenida de las Adelsas. The grand scope again is addition of protected bike lanes, addition of flexible posts. Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission's recommendation in June was to add crossings on both sides, both north and south of El Camino Real, also add some traffic calming elements, and a second lane onto Santa Fe Drive for westbound, which is a congestion relief. We have two alternatives here, again, doesn't mean one of these two definitely has to be presented to Caltrans, we have the option during design to modify. The layout of the street is not changing, the number of lanes, we're, we're keeping the, the layout the same, no change in capacity. In a way, we're, we're enhancing flow with adding the secondary lane, entry lane onto Santa Fe with this, with both alternatives, actually. And then there will be flexi-posts added at the corner, creating a de facto protected intersection, but not with the, with the, with the physical elements, with the raised curbs and, and ball bouts. The second alternative, we have the bike lane staying at the left side of the right turn pocket. In the previous alternative, it's on the right side, but because it's protected, it's allowed. If it's not protected, we have to keep it on the left side of the right turn pocket, so the southbound right turn remains in place. And then we have bike crossings on both sides, and the crosswalk per Commission's recommendation exists on both sides of the intersection. And then we're still adding the secondary lane onto Santa Fe, where we've had requests from public to look at this, where the right turn vehicles turn into Santa Fe, the left turn has trouble getting in and vice versa. So these two lanes will help with easing the flow from the right turn onto Santa Fe and the left turn from northbound. The third, the third and fourth are kind of intertwined, working together, but it's a pedestrian crossing at the border, I guess it says at Solana Beach, it's at the border of the Solana Beach where the Harbaugh Seaside Trail exists. The grand scope is to install a high-visibility pedestrian crossing, basically right at the endpoint of the city, including a Refuge Media Island and an RFB. Now, as mentioned earlier, the countermeasure is adding the crosswalk, the set aside, per se, where the, where grand language considers this a set aside for pedestrian crossing. MTSC recommendation in June was not to implement any road diet or traffic signal at the crossing. We have a few alternatives here, about two, two and a half years ago, City of Encinitas and City of Solana Beach worked together, we hired a consultant, worked on different alternatives for us. One alternative was this Z-crossing, similar to what we have at El Camino Real, obviously the difference is this one shows only one traveling in each direction. The second one is addition of a traffic signal at this location, similar to our other pedestrian crossing, we have one in the Restaurant Row, we have one at the Swamis. The difference is here, we're not recommending a signal with a masked arm. Again, alternatives, these are concepts, but the idea is to minimally impact the aesthetics. There will be streetlights for this, but the number of travel lanes will remain two lanes in each direction with this scenario. And there's also another alternative that, again, this would be more of a scope change, even the, the signal would be a scope change, because originally the grant language talked about RFBs. But this, the third alternative would be to bring the crossing to the South Cardiff State Beach, to the Seaside State Beach crossing with a full-on signal at this intersection. A pedestrian walkway can be built on the east side by the edge of the lagoon, inside the existing pavement, to bring the crossing all the way to this future signal, and then cross pedestrians there. And this connects to, City of Solana Beach is actively working on extending their coastal rail trail to the city border, to the edge of the Harbaugh Park, Harbaugh Trail, and then this would continue from that point. and then this would continue from that point. Project number four is modifications of Highway 101. The grant language calls for a walkway on the east side of Highway 101, all the way from the border of the two cities, from the city limits to the Cardiff State Beach signal. Um, Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission's recommendation was to add a two-way cycle track on the west side, converting the existing two one-way cycle tracks to a two-way, releasing some space, and then not doing a road diet, but, uh, minimizing the, the, the amount of wheel stops and flexible posts being used and, uh, possibly create a shared area on the east side that can be used by both bikes and pets. Staff, uh, brought two alternatives here. One is, um, to have a pedestrian path, um, on the east side and one, um, on the west side. Uh, the, the east side, as you can see, uh, would mean that if we added, we have to have a two-way, uh, cycle track on the west side, and then we can introduce a new bike lane for the northbound. There are two alternatives here. As you, as you can see, they're, they're not, uh, there are two slides, but half of that segment by, right after Las Olas, there is parking protected. So there are two very different cross-sections. One segment has a parking area and the other segment doesn't. So these two alternatives that you see are repeated for the two different scenarios. So this first slide that you're seeing is for the parking-protected area where we have, uh, parking on the road right now. So, alternative A shows a walkway on the east side and a new bike lane added for the northbound. The southbound remains as a share-o, and then we'll have a two-way cycle track, um, with the existing DG path that we have by the Dooms area. Um, alternative B would widen the walkway on the west side, and this obviously would be, again, a scope change request to Caltrans. And the existing three to five feet of DG path that we have on that side, um, will be widened to eight to 10 feet, provide a lot more right-of-way for pedestrians, runners and joggers and others to use this area. We will have a two-way cycle track, and then we will introduce a northbound bike lane, um, for, uh, our different groups of cyclists. The southbound will remain as a share-o. Not to confuse everybody, this is, the second slide is pretty much the same scenario, but without parking. This is as we get closer to the State Beach, where we don't have parking. This is basically right now, two lanes in each direction with bike lanes in each side, as you can see on the top. This will convert in the alternative A to a walkway on the east side and a two-way cycle track on the west side. Second alternative would be a two-way cycle track, no walkway on the east side, but widening the walkway on the west side. Uh, that concludes my presentation, council. Thank you for your patience with my, with my long presentations. I'm open to questions. Thank you.
Okay. First, we have questions of clarification. Okay? Councilmember O'Hara.
Uh, first question, um, I didn't get it from the notes here. Uh, we're gonna vote item per item, not overall.
Yeah. That's, that was what I was, was gonna recommend.
Yeah, I, uh, however, we need to go about that, let's.
Well, we'll probably take public, uh, comment, and I'll ask that the public be very clear which one of the four options they're talking about so that we can track. But we'll take that, a couple of comment all at once.
Right, yeah. And then, but then voting each one separately.
Go through each one sequentially.
Um, second, uh, you mentioned the core measures of the projects. Can you tell me what the core measure of each, each of the four grants is? Just so we can, as we converse, we know what the guidelines are, what we're, what we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah. So the, the first two, the protected cycle is pretty much in the title of each project. The protected cycle tracks are, you know, creating a protected bikeway. Um, the, the walkway is a walkway to add, to add a sidewalk or, or a pedestrian path, and the last one is a crosswalk.
And, and essentially just for the public. That, that basically means that in order to access the money from the grant, that has to be one of the features, or we're likely not to get the grant.
Yeah, the percentage of the likelihood, if we change it, I cannot say, but we have the option of submitting what's called a scope change to Caltrans, and then they reviewed in Sacramento and the team, ICP team gives back to us that they sometimes cross-compare it with the other applications. Okay, if you change, I'm sorry. Um, if you, if you change your countermeasure, you will not qualify anymore, but if they see you still score well, they might still grant it.
Okay. Engineer Nutter, you had something to add, or are you?
Uh, yeah, just to, I think, simplify things a little bit. Uh, for the two projects, Encinitas Boulevard and El Camino Real, uh, we must have protected bike lanes as the countermeasure. Uh, so that means flexi-posts for the bike lanes. Uh, otherwise, the, the grant would not be, uh, we wouldn't be sufficing for the grant. Uh, the, uh, project that you see, oh, don't, can you turn it back on the screen, please? Uh, so for project number four that you, you see on the screen, uh, that is the pedestrian path along Highway 101. Uh, the, the grant scope of that is a pedestrian path on the eastern side of 101. So anything that is not a pedestrian pass, path on the east side of 101 would require a scope change and approval for Caltrans. And then project number three, anything that is not a rectangular rapid flashing beacon crossing would require a scope change by Caltrans. So that means, uh, alternatives B and C for that project would require a scope change.
I appreciate that. Um, and then, um, when are we financially contracted, committed? In other words, I know we spent money on applying for the grants. Um, we have grant match. Uh, at what time does that kick in? Uh, and I don't know if it matters with or without adjustments.
And I, I apologize, Councilmember O'Hara. Uh, I may not have understood your question exactly, so I'll give you a response and let me know if I'm wrong.
Sure, perfect.
So, so we have to, to have a request for authorization into Caltrans, uh, within the next two weeks or so, um, for them to have time to process us to move into the design phase. Uh, that would give us the ability to start, start in the design phase in January. Um, we are not committed to any funds until we actually utilize the funds that they authorize for us. So, for instance, we get a consultant to help, uh, further the designs. If that consultant expends any funds and we try to pay them out, that would be something that would be a trigger, uh, point for, for having to, to repay any funds, if that, if that's kind of what you're getting at.
Yeah, that, so anything we've, we've spent in the grant process is what we've spent. Tonight, any decision we make won't affect what we spend until we have approval or nonapproval and use of the funds.
Exactly.
Appreciate that very much. Thank you. Uh, yield.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Uh, a couple of comments now. Um, on the, uh, Highway 101 on, along the Cardiff Reef, some of the options say no parking. I just want to clarify, I think I understood what you said. There's no parking there now, and there, there's no parking there planned. It's not like we're changing the parking number along the, the.
Madam Deputy Mayor, I appreciate you clarifying that. That's exactly right. Uh, the locations where parking exists today, parking would exist after this project. Uh, locations where parking does not exist today, parking would not exist, uh, when this project moves forward.
And my last comment is just more of a comment, and maybe as we hear our public speakers, we can, we can move forward in, on this. Um, I have been working with the City of Solana Beach, and our staff has too, for quite a while. Uh, if we're gonna, if, if we propose anything other than the RFB for the Cardiff Crossing, um, then that doesn't align with our coordination with Solana Beach. And so if, if, so I, I will, I will want to move forward with what we've already discussed with Solana Beach. Um, if it's any different than that, I would like to pull that item and have further dialogue with Solana Beach before we know the best way forward. I would have to say, if that's not the way we're gonna go forward, then we're out of, out of the range of what we've talked about with Solana Beach. This is gonna be right at the border of our jurisdictions. And our mayor's talking a lot about alignment. We have to be aligned with our neighbors and make sure that we provide the safest, um, transition there possible. Uh, so I just, I think that's more of a statement, uh, but I'm very adamant about that.
Any further clarification?
I do want, um, IT to help me with my computer. I've gone to a black screen, and now I'm back. I'm totally frozen out. Thank you.
In the meantime, uh, we'll move on to Councilmember San Antonio.
Um, I just had a question about the signalized, uh, intersection, uh, on the 101 by Cardiff, uh, by Cardiff Beach, State Beach. If by chance that is a possibility, that, um, what's the, the cost on that?
So, we have not done a full analysis of, of what that cost estimate would be. Um, just based on our experience, we would anticipate that would be roughly a $700,000 to $800,000 project. Um, the current funding for the grant for this project is roughly $400,000.
So we'd come up with the other part?
That would be exactly right.
Um, does that sidewalk count as the sidewalk on the east side? Could it count as that?
That.
Technically?
That technically could. That, so the portion, i- if this particular alternative were to move forward with project number three, which is the eastern pedestrian path, uh, I, that portion of sidewalk would actually, that would fall within the, the limits of.
Cause it doesn't need to extend all the way through to Las Olas, correct?
So, it, I guess, depending on what option for project number three, which is the, the eastern pedestrian path, uh, council would like to move forward with. Uh, if council moves, would like to move forward with alternative A, which is the path on the east side all the way through, um, Las Olas, then it would absolutely be counted. Um, if council would like to move forward with alternative B, which is taking that five feet of sidewalk width, applying it to more of a boardwalk feel on the western side, so long as, as Caltrans approves that, uh, scope change, we would be able to apply this portion on the eastern side to that grant.
I yield.
Okay. And then one, one more clarification, going back to the August 2024 discussion and, and to the point Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Lyons made. Um, at that time, I was on the council and I, I asked the question whether, and there were actually two competing designs. One, it was a Sandag-based design that had four lanes all the way through, through that section, no lane diet, or as I like to call them, laneectomies. Um, the, uh, and I made that point that night, and I would not have supported it if the staff at that night recommended that it, we weren't locked into one or the other design at that point. So the coordination, can, can you comment on, uh, are we locked into a four-lane or a two-lane solution at the south border?
So we, uh, the City of Encinitas is not locked in to either. Um, council can direct us as staff to, to move forward with either a two or a four-lane option. Um, the City of Solana Beach, um, they are attempting to move a capital improvement project forward that would be the extension of their coastal rail trail. And the one alternative that they currently have proposed is requesting or, or is, is.
Assuming.
Proposing that a lane diet, uh, meaning going from four lanes to two lanes, would have to be, uh, placed within the city limits. And we, if we do not have an option that is a road diet, um, they would have to come up with another alternative with City of Encinitas coordination that would tie into a four-lane, um, project.
Okay, thank you. And that, that was just a, we'll obviously discuss this more in, in, in a few minutes. Uh, so I think now we go to public, uh, testimony. We have 15, I, I saw.
We have 15 and some with time donations.
Okay. So let's, and, let's do 15 at three minutes each plus time donations.
Okay, the first speaker is Molly Hintley, and with time donation from Karen Kayden, who is present, um, followed by Ellen Burr, and then Marley Johudy.
Good evening, council. Um, this grant, um, it's been confusing to follow, quite frankly. Um, I'm happy to, I'm, I'm gonna highlight some of the areas I think we should look at. Um, but there's been a lot of confusion as far as when it's been presented at the Mobility Traffic Commission. So, my timeline's wrong. I thought this was part of Cycle 11, but it was Cycle 12, so skip over that. But on May 22nd, it was, this HSIP was first presented, and it's four separate grants, and it's a lot to unpack. And in fact, the Vice Chair, Glenn Johnson, mentioned that, that each one of these are very complex projects. So it was re-presented on June 9th, and I think that the Commission did a great job trying to come up with great recommendations. My questions, and the CS25D, Encinitas Boulevard. It's kind of a long stretch from Cali Magdalena to Villa Canterburya to be all bollards. That's a lot. So, I'm confused on the proposed protected bike lane. Um, I do support limited use of flex bollards, but I think that, um, I, I'm just kind of concerned what we can and can't do. And then I need more clarification on creating right-turn pockets for St. John's School, and then create the same at Ballor. So, I have pictures, because this is how I work. So, this is a dual-lane eastbound to Villa Canterburya. Um, see if my little pointer thing points. There we go. So, I'm wondering, is that what they're thinking of narrowing so that we can have more bike lane? Here's the westbound going to Ballor. And here's Encinitas Boulevard right in front of St. John. I actually showed some of these pictures a month ago. Yes, we need a right-turn pocket lane. Cars need to flow. The bike lane is compromised. We have limited, um, maybe limit flex bollards as a visual cue. Um, and if the grant allows us to have, um, proper, um, striping and painting. So, as I showed a month ago, is that people are using the bike lane as a travel lane? And so this is where we could probably look at flex bollards. So, sorry, I'm trying to make this go its next thing. So, flex bollards. And this is an issue, this area needs to have probably some flashing lights or something, because you can't see the kids. Even if you're in the lane going straight, you can't see people crossing. And again, flex bollards would make sense, but we have to think about the bus stop. Sorry, got crazy with my little bollards. Have fun with it. There it is, more. I love animation. But, um, and I know we have room with the simulated islands, so maybe that's where some of the lane narrowing happens. And maybe that will help prevent people using as that simulated island as a shortcut to turn around. Um, they're going westbound, and then they're using simulated island to do a U-turn to then go on Ballor. So, um, oops, I jumped ahead. So, these are the questions I have. These are the questions I have about what's being discussed, because I, I'm concerned about having bollards like, um, a bowling alley straight up the street, but I think we could have some areas where it would help and protect our kids, like right here at Ballor. Um, and then as far as the other items, I really struggled with trying to figure out which the recommendations were and which weren't. So as far as CS25E, I do support an east-side sidewalk, but I don't think a lane diet. So I know there's talk about, there's more rail trail. So, does this overlap with rail trail? And then as far as the, um, El Camino Santa Fe Drive, um, I, I was kind of confused on what the option was gonna be from all the diagrams. It wasn't really clear. So, my question to council, as you talk amongst yourself, is to try and get clarity of what these projects are, and maybe some of these grants aren't for us, and we could do better on our own. I'm just wondering. Thank you.
Well, that's an impossible act to follow. In general, about all of these, on May 22nd, 2025, initial design concepts for the four projects were presented to the Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission. The commission expressed support for road diet implementation along identified corridor on the South Coast Highway one and for installation of continental sidewalk at Solana Beach while emphasizing the importance of community input before proceeding with the design phase. So my question, was that done? Have we had community endpoint, input on any of these as they requested? And when it comes to the crosswalk and the sidewalk, I would think, I don't know what community they were talking about, but I would hope that that included Solana Beach, uh, the nature conservancy, uh, Sandag, US Fish and Wildlife, California State Parks and California Fish and Wildlife, whatever they're called. In general, we really need, can we go to presentation number six, page number 16? We have needed that crosswalk at the Solana Beach position since the tunnel was put in under the railroad. Should have been done at that time, but it wasn't. Surf riders submitted information and they are absolutely right. People are not going to arrive at that spot, see the ocean over there and walk a third of a mile down to the intersection of the entrance. Yes, it will be great. It's truly needed that we need a light there one day when we have the money and can get it all organized. But that's then, we need like a quick build crossing at that spot right now. And if you look on your little map, you will see where you go right across and then there's like a little goat trail that goes down into the parking lot at seaside. And I've been there many times and checked it out. And at one time, there must have been a staircase there. I don't know how long we can go back and look for that on a map, but there are yard, huge chunks and areas where there is still concrete and pebbles. So we need to put in a staircase there and a ramp. Bicycles can use it, make the crosswalk for bicycles too. And even it would be ADA compliant if you put in a ramp. So look at all those things you could get for just doing a really good crosswalk and a few improvements on the parking lot side. We do not need a sidewalk to nowhere on the east side, cause that's what it is. Only the coyotes and the mountain bike kids will be using it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Following Marley is Dan King, Jim Wong, and then Steve Linky with time donation from Dennis Caden and Scott Campbell, who are both present.
Great. Hi, my name is Marley Jauhdi and I wanted to say that I appreciate the other designs on Encinitas Boulevard and the two on South Coast Highway. So thank you so much for those, um, plans. I definitely approve of the RFE. Um, I have a few comments to make on the protected intersection at Santa Fe and El Camino Real. While alternative A is better than alternative B, neither of these designs would provide the safety needed. An SDA student was killed at this intersection and we need to create a true protected intersection with shortened crossing distances and a protective bike phase on the signal. So there's no conflict between bikes going straight and cars turning right. Neither of these designs accomplish this. A protected intersection minimally includes the following, one shortened crossing distance for people biking and walking and two protective bike phase on the signal. So there's no conflict between bikes going straight and cars turning right. Shortened crossing distances, um, can be happen by eliminating a car lane. And this can be accomplished, um, where starting possible a few hundred feet from the intersection. The lanes can be restored if necessary after passing through the intersection. And there are several instances in which the lanes reduce shortly after the cars cross the intersection. And then also curb refuge islands, um, are very important. And a bike signal, this can allow the cyclist to go straight and have a red light for the right turning motorists. Thank you so much for your time.
All right, good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council. My name is Dan King. I'm the assistant city manager for the city of Solana Beach and I'm here representing the city tonight. So first, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, my comments are specifically for the South Coast Highway 101 pedestrian crossing at Solana Beach project in item 10A. First and foremost, I wanted to thank city staffs, specifically, uh, city manager Jennifer Campbell and city engineer Dan Nutter for the recent communications and meetings held on this item and making themselves available, uh, to continue these discussions. We very much appreciate it and fully hope and expect that to continue. So we did submit a public, uh, comment package earlier today that includes a lot of the details for this item, so I won't go over those in full detail. However, I'm here to respectfully request a short delay on the council discussions or approvals of this particular project until your November 12th city council meeting. Uh, the city, uh, remains very much committed to this important project. However, this delay will allow staff, um, from both cities to continue to collaborate on the design that will work for both communities. This will also allow for more participation. As I'm sure you're aware, uh, Solana Beach City Council is meeting right now. So, um, our city staff there as well as our council members could not attend here tonight. So they would, they would like that opportunity on November 12th. In addition, Caltrans has confirmed in writing that delay will not impact, uh, the availability of the funds. So quickly, I wanted to touch, uh, briefly on the alternatives included in the staff report. It's important to note that the alternatives in the staff report right now, um, are not the same ones that was included in the Hzip application that was submitted and approved for funding. So alternative A is very similar. However, it does not include the extension of our coastal rail trail, uh, which is a critical component for Solana Beach, and I'll touch more on that later. Just for clarification, this extension, the coastal rail trail extension, um, was included in the current Hzip application. So it's not a new capital project. It's unknown why it was omitted from the staff report. Um, as far as the, all the alternatives, it's unknown if this extension is feasible with any of the alternatives. Since Solana Beach staff, uh, recently, um, uh, notified of that, the, the proposed new designs, um, that they're being developed and alternative A is not included in that application. Alternative B and C do not show the amount of right of way for inclusion as a coastal rail trail in the proposed crosswalk. And extensive work was done by our, um, shared traffic engineering consultant team with shared costs and staff from both cities to design the CRT extension and tie in the proposed crosswalk as part of the original design included in the Hzip grant application submitted by the city of Encinitas. We know this, this, uh, design will work. Without further time to analyze these new alternatives, we're unfortunately stuck with a lack of information to make informed decisions. Alternative C requires the installation of a sidewalk on the east side, um, all the way down South Coast State Beach. Okay, I just had one.
Yeah, in fact, I have questions for you, so just finish up.
So, um, also I wanted to, to just notify that this project was identified as a critical link, uh, by Senator Blakeshire and was recently awarded a $3,000 earmark under the state budget for construction this coming year. So we're ready and willing to get started on that project to complete the regional rail trail. So in conclusion, we respectfully request the item be delayed until November 12th.
So let's see, now, now I lost my train of thought on the question. The, uh, so alternate A that you're saying is close, but not exactly the same. You want, you want to have time for our two staffs to get together potentially. I know, uh, Mayor Heebner had called me and talked to me and wanted to get together with me too. So we're, the proposal that, that, uh, Solana Beach would be making would be to have delay this item tonight until the 12th, which is still within the window to submit to, uh, the state and still get funding. Is that, and in essence, broker, uh, a meeting? How do we then, and then bring it back on the 12th here publicly? Any proposals basically then listen to, adjudicate, whatever, discuss what we want to do to meet our, our proposals? I, I do worry that, uh, alternate A is, is a lane diet approach only. And alternate B and C are four lane. And it seems like we have an impasse regardless.
Sure.
And, and so
Yeah, so for
How is this, how is it helping to delay?
Sure. For, for Solana Beach, uh, specifically, first and first and foremost, the priority is the extension of the coastal rail trail. So, um, inclusion in that in, in alternative A is one option we'd like to see as well as this extra two or three weeks. If we could potentially look at the inclusion of the CRT, if that even works in alternative B. We're not sure because we haven't had, um, enough time to, to assess that.
Okay. And I think, uh, council member O'Hara has a question too.
Yeah, I guess, um. What is the, uh, what's the limiting factor based that our decision is going to affect yours?
For the extension of the coastal rail trails?
Yes.
Um, we plan to extend the coastal rail trail regardless.
Right, what's the limiting factor? Why, why, why does it matter what we do?
Because of the, um, not sure of the amount of right of way that we would have for the extension of the, of the coastal rail trail. We're limited in what we can do on the Harbaugh trails. So we need to make sure we have enough right of way to put the coastal rail trail in.
So your planned project is to cut into the existing street?
Correct.
Okay, just looking for clarification. Thank you.
Council member Schaefer.
Yeah, and it was my understanding that you guys only currently have one design for your extension.
Correct.
And none of the designs actually have you extending into the sensitive area. And, okay, so again, the only one that we're talking about tonight that you're, that Solana Beach would be willing to accept is the actual laneectomy.
I don't believe that's true. We just haven't had enough time to assess whether the CRT extension would fit into alternative B.
Okay, so in an extension tonight, and we don't come to that on the 12th and we don't have, uh, a confirmation between the staffs and it doesn't work, then we would probably, i- if we do decide to extend, we're gonna go forward with whichever one we choose. And as of right now, at least, I'm not gonna go into that part, but
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Well, I, I understand clearly that we have time to communicate. I want to collaborate in good faith with our neighbor. We have been doing that all along. I want to, I feel as though it's not complete. We can wish it would have been, but it's not as of right now. I think there's an opportunity for more dialogue. I think that staff has coordinated and there's some understanding at a staff level, but I'm hearing some things from your city council and your mayor that indicate to me that there's some un, un, um, unresolved issues that probably need to be resolved more at our level. So, uh, I, I know that your city council, your mayor has made an offer of being available to help us work through that. So, uh, I would like to collaborate in good faith with our neighbor. I don't feel like you're giving us an ultimatum. I just think you evolved your design in a manner that maybe was not aligned with what we're looking at as far as options. So, um, now you're here and saying, let's continue to ta- talk about this. So, um, I, I don't think that's bad to continue to talk and we know we have a limited time. If, if Encinitas is gonna, gonna draw a hard line somewhere, um, I'm, I'm sure Solana Beach would say, well, yeah, we can do this or we can't. So that's all part of it. If Solana Beach is gonna drive, have a hard line somewhere, well, we'll, we'll deal with it at that time. But I don't know that, that we're there. I think we can work something out.
Okay, council member Schaefer, do you have questions for Dan?
More just for the record, I just want to make sure that there's nothing, there's nothing that our city engineer has for this. Is there any questions or just again, for the record and make sure that we're on this?
There are a couple of clarifying remarks I would like to make for the record.
Please.
Question, we're in public, public comment right now. Do you have questions for, uh, Mr. King?
We have no further questions for
Okay, and, and, uh, council member O'Hara or deputy mayor Lyons, either of you have any further for?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, and I, and I concur. I, I think, uh, what deputy mayor Lyons mentioned about, you know, time and looking to get a best solution for everybody, um, in the end. It's the will of people. The, um, what I'm hearing is that Solana Beach only has one option though at this time.
Solana Beach has approved one option at this time.
Do you have an intention to work on other options or is your intention to get us to flex to your option?
No, I think it's, all options are on the table right now. We just need a couple of weeks to, to, to coordinate with staff.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate that clarification. Again, I, I agree, you know, making the best decision, if it takes some more time is something we should look at. We have plenty of public comments still, so thank you.
Thank you.
And council member San Antonio, do you have a question for?
I just had a quick question, was like, so was the only plan to cut into the roadway?
So when we developed this project together as Encinitas and Solana Beach, that was the approved plan by both councils that we applied for that application. So that was the only plan we looked at. It was just recently, these other options came to the table that we weren't aware of. And so we just want a little bit more time.
Okay.
And I would argue that point, but I'll do that later. Okay, so I would like to recognize the city manager and if staff would like to add anything. Thank you, Mr. King.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, assistant city manager King, we appreciate it. And yes, and we have been talking to Solana Beach and, um, you know, we are, uh, committed to collaborating. I did just want to make a couple of points, um, because we did have, um, representative from Caltrans out yesterday to talk about this. Um, I, I do want to make sure we understand that the coastal rail trail extension and our Hzip grant are two different projects though. The Hzip, and he, he acknowledged that, that they are not the same project. Solana Beach has one, we have another. There was coordination, we did really, we did receive a letter of support from Solana Beach for this type of crossing. So again, we are committed to working with Solana Beach. We did get confirmation from Caltrans, um, as Dan said, we have to have everything wrapped up and approved from Caltrans by December 31st. So they did offer to, um, let us have till the middle of November to actually get that in. So our November 12th meeting would be a, a completely acceptable meeting to do that. Just noting, um, with council, we've made the commitment to always get our council agenda packets out a week before. So that is actually November 5th. So I just want to note that's actually, that's actually two weeks from now, unless for some reason council, we do have to post at least 72 hours to meet Brown Act, um, regulations, but to let you know, but we are committed to working with the city of Solana Beach. But just want to point out that timeline that if we have to get, if we do get the agenda out by November 5th, it does leave us two weeks.
I do actually have one more question. Are you getting answered, do you have to stand up?
We need him at the mic if, if he's, if he needs to respond.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry to pull you back up there. Within the scope, the rail trail is a, because of the way the signage is on it, um, it's a cycling trail.
It's a multi-use path.
Okay, so it's walk-in, walk, pet and cycling. Okay, just confirming, um, that would affect what happens once it comes to an end and completion in Harbaugh Park.
Correct. And so the way it was designed was to go into the infrastructure of Encinitas, correct?
Perfect, I appreciate that. That is a helpful piece of all, important piece of all of this, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and if we can continue with, uh, public comment.
Uh, Jim Wong, Steve Linky with two time donations, Chris Giles, and then Judy Burlefein.
Good evening, council, Jim Wong, Cardiff. First of all, I, I apologize, I know I'd be following a distinguished gentleman in a suit and tie. Otherwise, we're dressed a little better. So my apologies. First of all, I want to thank and congratulate Abe and his team for writing not just one, not just two, three, but four successful proposals. That's quite an accomplishment, Abe. Okay, so I live near Ada Harris and SDA. And so every day I see hundreds of students riding their bikes to school. And because they ride their bikes, they're displacing hundreds of car trips. So they deserve a safe way to travel too, just as cars do. And so that's what this proposal helps with. And speaking of cars, traffic, I know there's a lot of concern right now about traffic congestion. And I think the best way of addressing traffic congestion is not more lanes or more roads or traffic lights or anything like that. It's less traffic. And that's what this does. It eliminates hundreds of car trips every day, thousands per year. Same with parking, you know, I know there's a lot of, uh, concern about parking, especially downtown. But the best way of addressing that is not more parking spaces or parking meters or, or enforcement, but it's fewer cars. And if you make it easier for people to use alternate forms of transportation like walking or biking, then there'll be fewer cars. And that'll be the easiest, cheapest way of helping the traffic problem. So I'm saying that if you want better safety, better traffic, better parking, it's worth it for these projects, even at full price. But at 90% off, 90% off, and that's a big amount, you know, 10% of the cost is quite a bargain and I don't see how you can turn it down. So please, for better traffic, parking, and most especially, safety, please approve this project. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Three of the four projects involve separated bike lanes, so I'm gonna start with a review of, of actual of, of actual SBL safety. There's a database called the Crash Modification Factors Clearinghouse, and this is an entry for the most definitive SBL safety study to date by Dixon and All that suggests installing plastic bollards will reduce crashes by 53.2%. Interestingly, though, interestingly, though, the same study says that if your SPLs have both plastic bollards and wheel stops, you can reduce crashes by 39.5% by removing the wheel stops, so the wheel stops are creating more danger. The problem with all this, though, is that bike crashes are substantially under-reported in the SPLs in these studies, so the increased safety is an illusion. The studies are based largely on state motor vehicle department crash databases, which are derived from police reports. However, crashes are defined as only those that involve motor vehicles and occur on public roads. Because they include separation, though, SPLs are no longer considered part of the public roadway. In addition, a majority of bike crashes leading to emergency department visits do not involve vehicles and do not appear in police reports. And the SPL infrastructure itself increases non-vehicle crashes with the plastic posts, the wheel stops, debris, other users, et cetera. The studies then go on to exclude crashes that occurred within 200 feet on either side of intersections. This despite the fact that a majority of vehicle bicycle crashes occur at the intersections and the fact that SPLs increase intersection crash, crash risk due to reduced visibility and awareness between vehicle operators and cyclists. So the alleged crash reduction in separated bike lanes is only achieved by excluding the vast majority of crashes that occur in the safety corridors. A controlled before-after study was conducted on the separated bike lanes installed in 2020 on South Coast Highway using both police reports and EMS dispatch logs. Consistent with what I've just presented, 63% of the crashes did not appear in police reports, and there was a 59% increase in crashes after the SPLs were installed, despite only an estimated 7% increase in bike trips. That is very different from the CMF prediction of a 53% decrease. In November 2020, there was a fatality in the separated bike lane on Lucadia Boulevard when a right-turning truck, represented here with the yellow arrow, collided with a cyclist going straight, the red arrow. A lawsuit suggested the presence of the plastic bollards as the primary cause of this right hook crash. Notably, this fatality would have been excluded as a crash from the SPL safety studies because it occurred at an intersection. Two other North County solo bike fatalities occurred in SPLs in 2024, apparent, both of them apparent crashes with the plastic bollards and/or wheel stops. And here are two more severe injury crashes in the South Coast Highway Separated Bike Lane caused by the bollards and wheel stops. These are experienced cyclists, but several casual cyclists also have been injured there. Another severe head injury occurred just a few weeks ago in the new Separated Bike Lane on Santa Fe Drive when a cyclist hit part of the infrastructure, fell and hit his head. Vision Zero seeks to eliminate all of these severe and fatal crashes, but the separated bike lanes have continued to be the root cause of such crashes. A decision to add even more of them should be approached with extreme caution. And now addressing the four projects, or maybe just three of them. The first one is to install plastic bollards along this portion of Encinitas Boulevard with options to improve turn lanes and add a third through lane to some segments to increase capacity and to narrow the lanes. Given the increased crash risk of plastic bollards, the best option may be to forego the grant entirely. However, if you want the grant to fund some of the other options, you could install the minimum number of bollards necessary to satisfy the grant, widely spaced and only on segments where the bike lanes and buffers meet the recommendation of seven and a half feet width for the bike lane and three-foot buffer. There could be very large benefits to reduce, reduce both congestion and increase safety at intersections by improving the turn lanes, like this right turn to southbound Bullard Drive towards Oak Crest Middle School. So I strongly encourage you to improve the, the turn pockets. Regarding the adding third lanes, the red circled intersection here of Quail Gardens Drive is already operating at a failing Level of Service E, and three apartment complexes are being added in that area with another 4,800 daily vehicle trips. According to the city traffic engineer, future development and traffic modeling predict other segments of Encinitas Boulevard could drop to Level of Service F, which would cause rush hour gridlock without adding more capacity. An unintended consequence of not addressing congestion is that drivers will become frustrated and make poor decisions like running red lights, other aggressive driving, or diverting to side streets to avoid the congestion. A better option might be to establish alternative preferred routes for more casual cyclists. Regarding lane width, Encinitas Boulevard is a truck and bus route. These vehicles are 10 and a half feet wide with their mirrors. Given that and the speed of over 35 miles per hour, national guidance would indicate the lane should be 11 feet to avoid dangerous lane encroachments. That said, it's possible you could experiment with an outside lane of 11 feet and inside lanes of 10 and a half feet to maximize bike lane buffer width. Project number two also requires plastic bollards. Again, given the increased crash risk, you might forego the project entirely, or if you want the grant money for other changes, do minimal bollards. Regarding the two alternatives, A on the left is a very unfamiliar configuration and creates the type of right hook risk like the fatality on Lucadia Boulevard. Alternative B on the right is preferred by putting through cyclists to the left of right turning vehicles, the purple arrows, and cyclists not comfortable doing this can still exit to the sidewalk and become temporary pedestrians if desired, the dark red arrows. The new striping should make it clear that the preferred method to turn left from northbound ECR onto Santa Fe Drive is the yellow arrows, stay in the bike lane until a far dash green crossing, rather than attempting to cross from the bike lane to the vehicle left turn lane, by the red arrow. The third project is the South Coast Highway Sidewalk. This is alternative B. Two issues with both A and B are that the northbound bike lane has no buffer and the southbound bike lane is a shero. I'm wondering whether it would be possible to combine the pedestrian and cycle track areas indicated by the red line into a Class One shared path. This, this cross-section shows a Class One path on the left, 14 feet wide. I'm not sure if it could serve as the coastal rail trail. All the users, all of the pedestrians and the more casual slower cyclists could use the Class One path, and they would all be protected by a continuous curve rather than non-contiguous wheel stops. And the faster cyclists could then have fully buffered bike lanes without the wheel stops or bollards as crash hazards. Another alternative is option three that was presented to the Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission, which was the one they voted to recommend but was not presented today, shown here. The bike lanes are not buffered, but at least the southbound bike lane is not a shero. And the final project is the Coast Highway Pedestrian Crossing at the border with Solana Beach. The presented alternatives include an RRFB or a signal pole signal to regulate the crossing. Another possible option that I'll present, this would have the larger mass size, that's a disadvantage, but it's a, called a hawk signal, hawk beacon. There'd be no lights when the, no pedestrians are present, but when activated, it's a stronger indicator that vehicles need to stop, and it's probably, in my opinion, the safest crossing. And I know some of my viewpoints on separated bike lanes are probably against what you might think, but there, I've done a lot of research into it. I submitted a paper on, on reviewing the safety studies, and the fact that all these safety studies exclude so many crash types, and the experience that we've had here in North County would suggest that they're just not safe. And so I, I really agree with everybody that we do need to make things more safe, but we don't want to take actions that will actually make us less safe. Thank you.
I got one question for you. On the, on your paper, which I got to read, and thank you. You made the point that you also did a control group. You looked at the segment north of Restaurant Row to Chesterfield, I want to say, or somewhere up there, and you compared the before protected bike lane versus after up there. And, and can you explain the control group? Because I thought that was important in your point.
Right, so what we did is we took police reports and EMS dispatch logs for the entire area from the border with Solana Beach up to Chesterfield for the, for the actual cycle track area, and then from Chesterfield up to, I believe, K Street, and they're both about the same length. And we looked at the total number of events both before and after the installation, and it was about a 57-month period before and after. And we saw about a 60% increase in crashes in the area that had the cycle track, but no change in the control area that was north of that, that was equivalent.
That was it, thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, next speakers are Chris Giles, Judy Burlefine, Jennifer Bright, and then Joyce Shepherd.
Chris Giles, and I just wanted to start by thanking Abe and all of the traffic engineering staff for all the work they did on making the preliminary drawings and plans and then adjusting stuff and working with Solana Beach and Caltrans and all that. So hats off to them. My only other comment would be that we focus on the Encinitas Boulevard and the Santa Fe Drive intersection immediately because there is a good number of children that travel through that area, whereas the 101 is going to have a lot more recreational cyclists. And as we were talking about, Solana Beach, there's a holdup there. So I think it's important that we focus on those two projects immediately, and I hope that you approve those projects. And then specifically with the Encinitas Boulevard, I am of the opinion that east of Quail Gardens should have bollards or protection. West of there, there's too many driveways, there's too much inconsistency. Any kind of separation there would be senseless. And then the protected intersection at Santa Fe, there's plenty of real estate to build a proper protected intersection there. And that we, there's really no excuse, considering that Brody died there. That should be a priority for you to get, get that grant funding and make that project happen. So that's it, thank you.
Hello, I'm Judy Burlefine. I support the spirit of all four of these projects. There are also more than 20 folks who submitted comments online who expressed support who maybe couldn't make it tonight. I'm happy with the two proposals for South Cardiff 101 and the one for Encinitas Boulevard. Santa Fe and El Camino Real, we have a real challenge. We have lots of trade-offs to balance, and trade-offs are hard. On the one hand, I under, I get it, drivers are overwhelmed by the new infrastructure. I'm one of those drivers, and we don't want to overwhelm them anymore. On the other hand, we have some mighty dangerous intersections in this city, and we have lots of kids on bikes. And whether we like it or not, these kids are going to keep riding bikes. Even if we license e-bikes for kids over 14, which I'm, could get behind, it won't substantially change the number of kids on bikes. So do we avoid change because we don't want to overwhelm drivers? Or do we implement change because there really are better options out there? Alternative B at that intersection, stick cyclists between turning cars and cars going straight. While my friend John Eldon is comfortable in that situation, I am not. And I don't think I'm alone. I think there are a few parents who want to see their kids sandwiched between two speeding lines of automobiles. Alternative A is a little better, but it still requires pedestrians and cyclists to cross in front, front of multiple lanes of cars. I support a true protected intersection, and I've sent all of you videos of what that entails. I hope you'll explore them more. So lastly, I just came back from Amsterdam, the heaven for people who like to ride bikes, and even for people who don't like to ride bikes. Everyone says to me, but Amsterdam is different. It's flat. Yes, this is true. It also rains 130 days a year in Amsterdam. And in Encinitas, yes, we have hills, and now we have e-bikes. So that isn't a problem. And how many days of rain do we have? Not that many. We have the most beautiful weather in the country. That's why we all moved here. So let's enjoy the outdoors as much as we can. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, council. I'm here today on behalf of nonprofit Nature Collective, where the owners of the Harbaugh Seaside Trails property, as well as managers of the Santa Lejo Lagoon, excuse me, Ecological Reserve. We are very enthusiastic to support the, creating a safe and essential connection between Harbaugh Seaside Trails and Cardiff State Beach. The Highway 101 crossing is a crucial step that unites our reserve with the majesty of our ocean, the innovative Cardiff living shoreline, and the biodiversity hotspot of the Cardiff Marine Protected Area. However, we are opposing one of the alternative concepts that were presented, alternative C. As currently planned, the sidewalk appears to extend beyond the existing curb into native habitat, including diegen coastal sage scrub, which is a vital habitat for many species, including the threatened California gnat catcher. These plants were also planted as part of the City of Encinitas Highway 101 Repair and Restoration mitigation project in 2012. Our reserve co-managers, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, also oppose alternative C. We've had great conversations with, with the city engineer, and we understand this is in concept at this point, but we would like to have further conversations and, and voice our, being, our opposition to C.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Joyce Shepherd, followed by Jim Jaffee, a time donation from Michelle Jaffee. Michelle, are you here? Thank you. And then followed by Dodd La Ponzel and Lee Radcliffe.
Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, and city council members. I'm Joyce Shepherd. I'm excited about the improvements in street safety being proposed by City of Encinitas with your four highway safety improvement grants. Congratulations. Yes, protected bike lanes on Encinitas Boulevard would be helpful because that is scary to bike on. And number two, El Camino in Santa Fe, my daughter was hit by somebody running a red light at that intersection about a year ago, and she and her friends had, on their way to high school, where they got concussions and whiplash, but they're okay now. But if it was a bicycle, it wouldn't be so. So we need to make this intersection safer. So implementing shortened crossing distances and a protected bike phase on the signal to help bikes going straight from cars turning right would be helpful. And I'm most excited about finally getting a crosswalk, the 101, between Santa Lejo Harbor Seaside Trail and the Seaside Beach. I, yeah, the flashing beacon would be great, and I really don't see why it would need to be narrowed. I think keeping two lanes in each direction would be great if possible, but I would like us to coll, collaborate with Solana Beach. Okay, so thank you so much.
Hello, I'm Jim Jaffee. I'm the co-leader of the Beach Preservation Committee of the Santa Jo County Chapter of the Surf Rider Foundation. I'm also a longtime resident of Solana Beach, and I've been involved with the crossing and, I've been involved with the Harbaugh Trails since the beginning, getting it done, you know, working with the conserv, the nature collective on the, the gate, the basically, there's been a fence put in there, right? And one of the, we, we got a condition put on that permit, which Encinitas put in, that that gate has to be removed at some point so that there's a crossing there. The reason there's a gate there is because we have an unsafe condition. The reason we get HSIP grants is because it's an unsafe condition. If it takes an ectomy to avoid a crane ectomy or a lobotomy, we got to do it, man. We cannot have unsafe crossings. We cannot have unsafe streets. We got to do what the right thing is to make things safe. Right now, people are crossing there. Your own traffic engineer has put that gate up there. We objected to it, and we want it to be taken out and replaced with something more sustainable that's going to connect that beautiful lagoon for beach users and be. that beautiful lagoon for beach users. And beach users, people that park in the lagoon and then take a walk down to the beach, enjoy the beach, the whole experience, it's a magical thing down there in that lagoon. You can get birds, you can get dolphins, you can get seals, everything in your same beach experience. I think it's important we integrate whatever solution for that crossing and any kind of north-south access, we integrate with Solana Beach, as Mr. King has brought to your attention. And I think that's been requested multiple times on both sides. We've been to both sides of the table asking that that happens over the years. So it's kind of a surprise that this has not happened already, and I hope we can take this over the finish line. Because to get free money, you got to do what Steve Miller said, man. Take it and run. You know, your staff did a great job here getting those grants. And we really should use it to integrate safety. That section of beach is a treasure. If you think about it from a surfing perspective, as Surf Rider does, you got the crown jewels of Encinitas surfing on that stretch of beach. Basically, you got seaside where there's been multiple contests. I think it was the junior championships were there two years ago or a year ago. Can't recall exactly what year it was, but that's an official world championship tour event that's attracted to this area. And when events like that are happening, the number of people trying to get to and from seaside is astronomical. We had the Sorento Surf Festival, put on by the local guys that put the momentum films on the map and put Rob Machado, Kelly Slater, all these guys into the mainstream of the surf media. That is a treasure. And then on the other side, you got Cardiff Reef, which is, you know, where it gets amazing. It's surfable almost every day of the year. And on the north side of that stretch, we got Swamis. So if you think of it, you got your two castles and your queen in the middle there. You know, let's protect those areas access-wise. It's not the road. It's a great thing to have a nice big highway, but nobody has a stretch of beach for surfing, probably in this country, that is this utilized, this good, produces this kind of quality of surfers and experience on the beach. I believe San Leo, as what I've heard, is it's the most utilized campground in the state, right? You know, we're talking the crown jewels of Encinitas here. We got to do the right thing for access. Surf Rider is 100% behind getting money to fix this up, to make it more accessible for all beach users. Thank you.
Quick question about the gate you're talking about. Is that on the east side or the west side? Are you talking about the rope fence?
The fence, sorry.
So the rope fence, and it goes a little way down?
It's not a rope fence any longer. It's actually a, well, maybe it is, yeah. Yeah, but it's got wood on it.
As of March, yeah. Wooden rope. Okay. I just was trying.
Yeah, that fence needs to be, we got the condition that that fence needs to be removed. And we've talked to the lagoon folks about the nature.
Okay. I just want to make sure we were talking about the same thing. We had the facts in front of us.
Yeah, sorry to confuse you on that.
Yeah. And?
Dodd La?
How many more do we have?
We have Dodd La Ponziel, Lee Radcliffe, Russell Levann, and then Rihanna Glor, who registered support but did not.
So it sounds like we have three speakers.
Yes.
Can we go three more before a break? Will that work? Or do you want to take a break? Okay. Let's keep going. Yep, no, not yet.
Okay.
Trying to get through the public.
Okay. I'm just going to do a little construction here. There's a painted strip on the pavement. I have two assistants. We support separated bike paths everywhere. And here's a car. Okay. Now, this is the driver, and she's going to be going down the highway, and this is a bike lane. And this is, I couldn't bring a whole bike in for her, so I have to pretend Marley's a bike rider, okay? So now we're going to.
Scenario one.
Scenario one. Ding.
Oh, oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. I just got a text.
Did you see the yellow, the white line here?
Oh, no, I didn't see it.
Scenario two, we're going to add some bollards, and we're going to do the same thing again. Ding.
Oh, thank goodness. I'm so sorry. I almost.
Wanted to do something a little light in here, but this is really profound when you get out of the city. And I actually, I'm too afraid to ride just with paint. And when I was young, I actually went off the road because I was leaning over to work on, do something with one of those eight-track cassette players. I don't know if you remember those. A long time ago, I reached over, went off the road, and totaled the car and almost killed my friends. So anything we can do to protect the bikes from the cars, painted lines are not enough. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And then Russell Levann.
Hi, good evening. I'm Lee Radcliffe. I'm representing Safe Streets Encinitas. I didn't wear my yellow shirt, though, because it's Halloween, so, sorry. I'm not going to talk to you about the specifics of all these projects. I've been hearing a lot and trying to absorb it, as we all have in our group, but I'm understanding that it's very much a preliminary design. So I'm speaking here tonight in favor of the agenda. I urge you to accept these grants, as the city desperately needs safety improvements. Safe Streets Encinitas takes pride in being a voice for the community, and we are counting on you to continue to address and prioritize safety improvements citywide. I'd also like to take a moment to thank Councilmember Lindis O'Hara and Watts, is he still back there? Oh, he left, for attending last Sunday. It was really nice to see you all and talk to you, and we really appreciate it. Together, we're proving that street safety is not a political issue, it's a human issue. So we appreciate that. And thanks to Abe, you've done such hard work on these projects and on others, and we appreciate your commitment to the city and your availability to the community. We hope you move forward on these projects, utilizing city funding that was previously appropriated, and utilizing data-driven solutions to develop and finalize plans. We look forward to more discussions with you and our community so that together we can implement infrastructure changes that are the best fit for our city. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Russell Levann here. I have changed my notes this whole evening. I started with one idea when I was coming in here, and now after hearing all of the testimony, I'm not quite sure where to start. But one is on Santa Fe. I really encourage the concept of the protected intersections. I just got back from Washington DC, and we went around that city on public transit. We walked probably seven or eight miles a day. We didn't rent the bikes, but we were on segways, and they used the bike paths. And it is kind of amazing what they have done there with some of their bike paths. Some of them, one of them actually goes down the center of Pennsylvania Avenue. And it's a two-way path. There's walking in the center of the road, but it was incredibly safe because when you got to an intersection, there were lights specifically for the bike lanes. So it made it much safer. And I've seen the same thing in Vancouver, BC, where it's a phenomenal system. So I really, I know that the traffic engineers have heard about these things before and seen them. If you haven't seen them yourselves, I highly recommend it because it was amazing to travel around these cities, and they're very well-used. I mean, we saw bikes everywhere last week when we were there in DC, not BC. So I would encourage the protected intersections. And then the coast highway, I had all kinds of suggestions, and after listening, it really sounds like we need to work with Solana Beach, because a lot of the ideas I had, I threw out the window during the course of the evening. I find it sad that for years, we were trying to get a coastal rail trail solidified in this area, and we've never really completed a cohesive system that goes all the way up the coast. So now here we are, having a problem with implementing the system because we don't have a cohesive system designed. I mean, I think the best scenario is to change the scope of that. I don't know of anyone I've ever seen trying to walk on the east side of the coast highway when you can walk along the path on the beach. So that, I think, would be one of my major suggestions, and I'd like to have any of the bike lanes separated so that it's safer for the riders. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes speakers.
Okay. And we had, you said the one, who was it that?
Rihanna Glor, registered support but did not wish to speak.
Okay. So we will take a probably 15-minute, I want to say 10, but I know it's really going to be 15. So Target being back here in 10 minutes, had 10 till, and we'll try and get started no later than 5 till. later than 5 till.[101.11]
The first one. So with that in mind, I'll recognize Deputy Mayor Lyons, you have the floor.
All right, just as far as the project number one, as we've identified at the CS 25D Encinitas Boulevard, I'm in favor of the proposal that is in front of us for the protected separated bike lanes and the turning pockets. And I, my only request on this would be if we don't need to have as many of the bollards. I know that's a level of detail that our staff will look at during the engineering of it. And so if the number of bollards is not needed based on the geometry of the roadway restriping, then I'd be in favor of not having bollards the whole way. Did you want to just take that one first?
Yeah, just do that one and then we'll come back and do them in sequence because that'll be quickest and most clear for everybody. And it would be Councilmember O'Hara.
Were you able to con, to, to get the traffic incident numbers on this road?
I don't, I don't have it on this road, no.
Any cycling accidents on Encinitas Boulevard?
Yeah, I, I don't have the database with me, I'm sorry.
Okay, I had requested that in my briefing. In our briefing, we discussed it and you said there were no accidents you knew of except for one with a motorcycle.
Correct, that was a fatality, I believe it was a motorcycle. During the briefing, I might be mistaken, I think there was the seaside beach intersection that we said we'll bring the database back, which I did bring with me tonight, but this one I didn't, maybe I missed it.
No, no worries. So I'm concerned about this project based on the results of when we did similar to Lucidia Boulevard. Obviously, there was resulting, one of the public speakers spoke about the death as a resultant of the design, which this has a lot of similarities to. I'm concerned that we haven't addressed right hooks at this point or haven't discussed the possibilities of what we're creating for right hooks. I also note that as someone who drives Lucidia Boulevard, my house is guard-rilled by Encinitas Boulevard and Lucidia Boulevard. On Lucidia Boulevard, the bollards have increased the traffic. So, and they've made some of the right-hand turns into neighborhoods difficult. However, I'm at a conundrum because I, I believe the right-hand turn pockets as part of this project are a valuable and needed asset. I don't want to pause this project and lose the opportunity. I unfortunately don't support the bollard bike lane. I don't think it's necessary, I think the first time someone hits it, we'll finally have an accident out there. But I don't want to pause it at this point, I want to keep it moving forward. So I would like to know the minimum number of bollards we can put on that to keep these turn, turn lanes available to us because I know to put, to build them ourselves, we're talking close to $200,000 likely designed and built. And if we can get this in, in this grant, I'd like to push this forward. But I will say at the same, I'm only going to push it forward so that we don't lose the grant, not because I think this is a great design. I'll yield for the moment.
Councilmember San Antonio.
I am in favor of this.
If you could turn your microphone on.
This isn't the design, correct?
Correct, this is just the concept.
Concept. I believe in our, maybe in our briefing, we talked about what's the max distance, or I guess I, I do like that there is a max distance that we can put these bollards, but I, after I talking to a resident today, she mentioned that, you know, it could be confusing for a driver to be able to pull in if these are, I think it's 20 feet or 40 feet, right? The distance between the bollards.
The guideline on spacing the, the wheel stops is not absolute. It's a design information bulletin released by Caltrans is not yet found its way into MUTCD. So the guideline, I believe, says from 20 to 50 feet of spacing, but even that is not like a shall be within 20 to 50. So there is flexibility on that, and there is also flexibility on which segment of this corridor, which is a long segment.
Oh, okay.
Long corridor. We don't necessarily need to have 100% of the segment covered with bollards. So if there is a segment that's short between one driveway to another, between one small street to another, if we don't want to put bollards, I'm sure we can find a way to still consider this a protected bike lane, but with a missing segment of bollards. So we don't, sorry that I'm going, I'm going along, I just want to be clear that, yeah, we have a lot of flexibility with regards to the design and the quantity of bollards.
It just has to have.
That element in it.
Element in it. And by bollards, we were talking the flex post, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I'll, I'll yield for now.
Okay, I'm up next. So first, a couple of things I wanted to confirm that we're not adding a third lane anywhere. Those, they're all existing as those cross-sections showed, so there's no third lane. Minimum lane width, I believe in the numbers that you're proposing in this concept, 11 feet for the travel lanes on Encinitas Boulevard, is that correct?
That is correct, and with all new projects in the city, based on the direction that we've heard from the council, we are going for 11-foot lanes all, all around the city on classified roads.
Appreciate that. And bollards, I think I'm very similar to here. I love to hear the fact that we can go from 20 to 50, and I would leave it ultimately to your design and your discretion. I thought the presentation by Molly Hintlin showing the photos of the cars illegally using the, the bike lane to cut in is, is good justification for limited use of bollards. I, I'm not a big fan of solid bollards all the way up there. I don't think they stop much really, but I think there are places where we want to stop cars from illegally behaving. So I, I support whatever, not the minimum, but whatever the, the traffic engineer's judgment is on the, the sparser use, but, but important use of bollards. And then the, the turn pockets, just to be clear in the concept, that this would be a turn pocket that's against the curb for the school, for the church and school, and then Ballor with the solid green painted bike lane outside, and then travel lane, travel lane, center median, correct?
That is correct, so there will be tapers and transitions into these bike lanes. By, by MUTC code, we're not allowed to have a bike lane on the right side of a right-turn-only lane. So wherever there is a right-turn-only lane, the bike lane shall be put on, it's very strong in MUTCD code.
And where the transition occurs will be the conflict marking with the green.
Correct.
Blank stripes. Perfect. How, how do you determine how long those turn lanes would be?
We will conduct some counts and surveys during the design phase to, to estimate the length. However, with St. John and what I've observed in the past six, seven years, I don't think any length would be enough, but we'll try to maximize based on how much, because I've seen queues over there for a quarter miles.
Yeah, exactly, so, okay, and, and I support this, and I'll, I'll move approval of this item for the Encinitas Boulevard. Project HSIP, sorry.
And I'll second.
Councilmember Schaefer.
I, I agree with this one, I, I agree with everything that's been said. Just for the concept, on your presentation, you're showing westbound, and on the staff report, I'm showing eastbound. So the three, the spots where there are three cars, you're showing on the west side.
There was a typo in the, in the staff report, which was fixed this morning, I believe.
This is the correct one, okay.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I think this is the, the best improvement and want to get this, this grant going, so, thank you guys.
Okay, and Councilmember O'Hara.
Yeah, I just, again, I think the most important feature of this is the right-hand turn pockets. And so I'm hopeful, as we're into the public, that we bring back substantial mapping of this, similar to what we're going to see coming up on item, was it? Yeah, and on the Santa Fe Al Comunial intersection. Some significant degree because I think there is two, I think one of the, Molly said it, or Miss Hintlin said it, that, that, that intersection at Ballor needs to be done very, very correctly. It's, it's, it's very hard to see coming up that hill, and there's a lot of places where cars cheat. So maximum design as far as what we're brought back on that intersection, please.
And then the, it will come back to us in the final design for approval needed for the design immunity coverage that we would give you by putting it in front of public.
Absolutely, and under direction of City Manager, we can't even bring it back for, for review when we have a 30% or 60%. It doesn't need to be at the final stage.
Okay, very good. And before Deputy Mayor Lyons, the City Manager wanted to.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of council, I just wanted to echo what Abe said. So yeah, this project will, depending on what ones are approved tonight, they have to absolutely come back to council for design approval of the plans, design immunity, then it'll have to come back again once we have to bid out construction. So absolutely, council will definitely get to see the complete design, all the specs and everything else, and that will need council approval in order to move on. So it will come back at least twice to council, for sure.
And I hadn't quite finished talking, my, my request is I would like to see this design with future, we'll use that, that GS map that we looked at earlier, the future build-out of what's going to be at Cole Gardens and Westlake and Encinitas Boulevard, because what it looks like now is nothing what it's going to look like in several years. So I definitely want to make sure that that is in the consideration of what's going to be there versus what's there now.
Meaning the additional third lane that, that is being added.
No, the additional 900 homes that are going to be there.
And the, and the frontage improvements on Moonlight Apartments and Sunshine in particular.
Correct, yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying.
That's a great point. Deputy Mayor Lyons.
And all I did, I, all I wanted to add to it is that we'll have not only this opportunity for public involvement, but the other two opportunities, the next one being the most important when we look at the design in more specific detail. And that'll be a really important time for the public to come out and tell us what you think about the details. So I just wanted to put a finer point on that.
And with that, I think we have a motion and a second.
The motion was to approve the preferred, the preferred project configuration for the Encinitas Boulevard Protected Bike Lane Project, CS 25D as presented.
Correct. So call the question.
Motion carries unanimously.
And that will move us on to the El Comunial and Santa Fe intersection project. I have you still up, was that a?
I just, I came back on. So staff has already given your, your summary of this. So I do have a question for staff before I explain where I stand in more detail. I do like the alternative A. I see that there's some roadway. One of the, one of the comments was when you have to cross a large amount of roadway, when you're a pedestrian and a bicyclist, it becomes less safe. I see we have, on the southbound side of Santa Fe Drive, we have two lanes that taper down to one within, I'm going to guess, I don't know, there's no scale on here, but within about 30 feet. And also on El Comunial southbound, just past the intersection of Santa Fe Drive, we have a, a third lane that tapers down to two lanes within about 30, 40, 50 feet. I'm just guessing, but the graphics show that there's extra lanes there that taper down. When the community was saying, let's put a full protected bike, I want to make sure I'm using the right, right words, corner refuge kind of protected bike intersection here. If we look at those, that additional asphalt that's there right now that just tapers down to what is, what it is beyond the intersection, does that give us enough room to, to add in a pedestrian refuge? Or is there, is there other advice you might give me to add in that bicycle pedestrian refuge?
So we, we do have other alternative designs, however, we did not bring it to, so I'm assuming you're talking about some sort of a scenario like this. Like, these are more standard protected intersection designs. We do have other alternatives, however, with pretty much all of these scenarios, the capacity of the intersection will be impacted drastically. So we will be looking at a little bit more congestion, a little bit more delay, and then obviously the trade-off would be we'll have shorter crossing and some more, you know, protection islands and some more concrete work. So we do have alternative designs, again, back to the origin of the conversation. We have options, but what, what staff proposed today as a start is the simplest approach where we get the safety improvements for the cyclists, for the pedestrians, eliminate that situation that we had where cyclists going northbound had to cross three northbound lanes and get to the left turn pocket to turn left onto Santa Fe. This proposed design will allow a, a much safer crossing with the, with the crossbikes. But we do have other, other options.
I, I, I feel like in honor of Brody and to advocate for our kids, we don't, I, I don't want to go the simplest route, I want to go the right route. This grant was authorized based on a protected intersection, and if we're only going a simple step towards a protected intersection, I feel as though we're not doing what the community wants us to do. Councilmember O'Hara is trying to show me something over here. Okay, sorry about that.
One thing to clarify, Councilmember, I know the title of our slide says protected intersection. The grant language is just protected bike lane. It's not, the grant's scope is installation of protected bike lane. But we did incorporate this intersection design into the grant. So it's not like if we don't do protected intersection, the grant would be jeopardized. The grant only requires us to add some flexible posts along the, along the corridor.
Oh, okay, it's different than what I thought. I'm surprised.
Is it clear, or I wasn't clear enough, or so?
I think you're being clear that you think the grant was just for bollards to protect the bike lane.
Correct.
But I think our intent was the whole intersection needs to be a protected intersection, and that's the whole genesis of this project back when we first gave, allocated money for it.
Absolutely, and that, that funding is still in place. That, so, so I guess it was parallel. So we first received that funding from the council to start design for a full protected intersection. I believe it was 800 or 900K.
792.
792, so 800. So we did, after we received that, we did apply for this grant with, however, the protected intersection will not, was not considered a countermeasure that would score well enough. So we applied for a protected bike lane and then incorporated in, in this into the grant application.
So are you telling me that we're also going to get a protected intersection because we're funding another portion of this? Or did we switch gears there just to get this money?
I guess switch gear would be, so we applied for, Caltrans grant application was for a protected bike lane, which means we have to put some bollards to, to protect our bike lane. However, when Caltrans, when Caltrans awards the money, you have some flexibility with regards to how you restripe the corridor. So we included this design into the, into the grant. So Caltrans doesn't mind if we incorporate this version of protected intersection or a, a different version. We can have, as long as we meet the countermeasure, which is the protected bike lane.
So the HSI could be for the protected bike lane, and we could use other funding for the protected intersection? I'm sorry, you were just.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so HSI could help us fund the protected bike lanes, but in addition, we could use our money to fund the protected intersection because that was the objective of using our money.
We can, and we also can use, I would assume, a, a good, good portion of the grant for that protected intersection. It doesn't mean that because the grant was originally for, for, for protected bike lanes, it does not qualify to be used for a protected intersection, if that's the route council wants us to take.
Okay, I would only support this, and I reluctantly say that because I love this money, but I would only support this if we also include what our original intent was, which is for the fully protected intersection. And I think that achieves the objective of, of protecting our children at this very vulnerable location and honoring Brody. I make that statement.
Okay, and all done?
I am.
Councilmember San Antonio.
I guess maybe I might go against the grain here, but I do like option B or alternative B. I like that, that they have the choice if they do feel uncomfortable getting into that bike lane between the two cars. I think it keeps them out of that turn pocket, but they can come down into the sidewalk and cross the street, like you said earlier, to become a pedestrian at the crossing. But I just think it's intuitive that they keep going, that they ride straight through it instead of getting between, in that right turn lane. So for me, I like that. To me, it just, and I believe when I talked to, to Director Nutter, that it was, this is a more standard intersection, correct? Throughout the city, like this is, this would become, this is more standard that you'd see everywhere.
Correct, for a done protected intersection, this is the traditional standard approach.
So I think just so if riders are riding around town, that this is what they are going to see wherever they're at. This makes more sense to me. With that being said, again, I've talked to a resident this morning. I had a great conversation. I think, would I want my, you know, six-year-old or eight-year-old riding in this bike lane? Probably not, but they have the option to come over here, which I would, hopefully, they'd understand, cross over here at the, become a pedestrian at some point when you're crossing this big intersection. But for the majority of the kids I see out riding around, they're, they're older. They push the limits and they, they're in there, they're in that, they want to be in that. I, I think they want, it just makes sense to me, to be honest. Yeah, I, I, I'm in support of B, so I'll, I'll leave it there.
Okay, anything else? And Councilmember Schaefer.
Thanks, Councilmember O'Hara. The, I'm in support of B, kind of of the same mind is that being more consistent throughout the city. You know, going back to that, that GIS tool I talked about earlier, staying consistent with our, our bike processes, and not just for the bikes, but for the drivers in town, for us to have something consistent that we can lean into across town so we don't come into a, a different parts of town and have a different set of rules. So the one we just talked about at Ballor, we didn't want, you said it was in, we shall have the bikes on the left side of the right-turning cars. This would be going on A, or the one you just showed, would be counterproductive to what you just talked about at Ballor.
Whenever you have a flexible post or wheel stop or any kind of a physical barrier, it excludes it from the code, it's, it's not considered a bike lane anymore. I mean, technicality, but, so the option A is not against the code because of the fact that there are, there are bollards there.
Okay, well, the, the fact is, is over on Ballor, we're going to be using that style. And so over here on this part of town, so somebody drives, they go down Ballor, they come down Santa Fe, and now they're, they're going to be meeting a separate, a different type of intersection.
That's true.
You're going from one to the other, that's the biker, but the same thing with the vehicle as well.
Yeah, option, option A, I don't think we have anything similar to option A in the city right now.
Correct, so to have, I, I get the understanding, but now, you know, the, what, I think it was Steve that brought up, the, Brody's scenario specifically was coming from south heading north and came across all three lanes of, of traffic and ended up in that left turn lane on the north, the northbound turn, turn lane. In this case, Brody would have come up and all the way to the north side of the intersection, come across, heading west on the north side of the intersection. So that's the, the protection there. Again, we have eastbound traffic, you know, westbound traffic. I think this keeps, personally, I think, I think option B keeps it more consistent so that drivers and cyclists can be more predictable over the course of time. And as we build out a systemic standard across our city of how we're going to do bike safety, vehicle safety across town. So I support option B as of right now.
Okay, thank you, I'll hop in there. First thing is, we're here to maximize safety, right? And that's for everybody, for bicyclists, pedestrians, for vehicles too. I look at, at option A and I see a right hook. And, and everybody knows that geometry where you drop down and you turn and go up, and all that traffic in the morning going to SDA, I mean, I did it dropping kids off, my wife did it. And I just, I am so concerned about the right hook. We've had fatalities due to right hooks, we've, we've seen it happen. To me, that, that's a huge threat under option A. Option B has the through, it, it's, it's not perfect, but it is the standard. When I go drive through Carlsbad, when I drive through Slana Beach, a lot of our intersections look like that. And one of the problems I think we have is confusion with our drivers. We have to have, and we always have new drivers, why, we have new drivers coming up. Some consistency could help, it really could help here. And, and I think you get the safety, we, we have these kind of intersections everywhere. Are we going to go to essentially installing right hooks in all these other intersections? So, so I got the right hook, the standard configuration. Let's talk specifically about the northbound, from the northbound side, we're adding the crossbike. That is huge. In other words, instead of expecting bicycles to cross three, three lanes and get into a left turn lane in the middle of traffic, we want them to go up and, and just as Councilmember Schaefer said, use the crossbike. I think that's a huge safety improvement. So not putting in a right hook, putting in a crossbike is good. I would add one more thing to this that's like A, and that would be a protected island on the north side there. On the, you know, you see how it's just simulated island with the double-double yellow. I would make that a protected island because that's part of a protected intersection, is have someplace for pedestrians. If they, if they get caught out there halfway, they can go to an island and, and stand. So I would add that to this. And then ultimately, I, I look at the budget, and we've got, we're, we've put aside of our own probably general fund, almost 800,000, and then this, this is for 440. I'm not quite sure where all the money's going. I see a little concrete work there, and I see bollards and probably slurry seal so we can put down new paint. Seems like a lot less than 1.2 million. Am I, am I off there? Especially when I look at all the slurry seal and repainting over, probably not quite a mile, but Encinitas Boulevard was $800,000, so it's two-thirds of this, so. How much money do I really need for this project?
I'm not asking for a share mayor, but if, if you let us proceed with this, I think the 800,000 will be available for council to repurpose.
And that fits with what my suspicion was. So just so we understand, the full, you know, I think what you said earlier is the full 400,000 plus our match, we'd still have to put our match in, that would go for this, and, and then that would free up some of that 800,000 for other safety improvements at, at near housing element sites, those kind of things. So I am in support of B because I believe it, it is, is the safest of all the configurations here, and it is because of, I have a, a fear of right hooks.
And so I'm next to the queue. I'm not opposed to B, and I appreciate that. My councilmembers have said there's continuity with how we're applying the, the paint and the, and the geometry. So I'm not opposed to it. What I'm more interested in seeing is where we can have some more pedestrian, pedestrian refuges. And I think that's where we had looked to use that funding. And so by saying we're not going to do that here, I think that's, that's a failure on our behalf, that we're not bringing this to the level of protecting the bicyclists with the refuges. Could you pull up what the graphic was that you had up before where you were showing maybe a, a third option? A C that uses the money to enhance the safety of?
So we have, we have a few different, different versions, but what all these three, two, three other alternatives have is a different layout with regards to their roadway capacity means they have. means they have dropped lanes to accommodate for these islands. But at the same time, they have shorter, shorter crossing distances because of the concrete islands and the protected nature of the intersection. They, they all have these.
Well, the roads go down to one lane and two lane, just in a few feet anyway. So I'm not buying the, this is going to affect our traffic movement volume significantly. What we're trying to do here is create a safer intersection for the bicycles and pedestrians and not enormously impact vehicle movement. And the fact that those lanes go down to the smaller lanes right away, I mean, if this was a whole, we're getting rid of a lane, I get it. But this isn't. These roads are already narrower just beyond the intersection. I don't know why we went away from this. This, this is the safer option.
So the lane drop does have some, some safety factors. I know it's short, but imagine a vehicle turning right from Santa Fe. If they go into this current state, unless we do a no turn already, like we don't allow the right turn, when a southbound Santa Fe, a southbound El Camino Real vehicle is going, that existing third lane gives them an acceleration distance basically to allow them to merge easier. If we allow it with this situation right now, there is, again, we can manage this by eliminating that right turn, which again, will have some congestion effects and additional delays. But if in this current state, the southbound is going through, and this right turn happens with the protected intersection, this length of right turn is longer. We are, I'm not saying we're creating a rear end hazard, but this will be added where right now, because of that third lane is non-existent, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Have we done traffic volume studies right here?
I do have the volumes, but this, this kind of safety analysis, usually volumes doesn't affect me. Speed is more important here to just, just the right turn volume.
So we haven't really analyzed these as far as how the traffic will move. You've got a volume.
With a lane drop, no.
You're making an assumption.
Correct.
What I would want to suggest, my colleagues might help me consider here, is that we probably don't know yet how much this safer solution would impact the traffic flow. I will propose that I don't think it's going to impact it a lot. El Camino Real, you know, this is, so, so I would like to make sure our children are protected at these intersections, and that was the whole reason we even went after this money. So the fact that we've just, at a staff level, decided we're not going to pursue that anymore, it's unacceptable.
Just some clarification, and keep that slide up. We're talking about, we're not talking about the north side of the intersection with the right-hand turn off of El Camino Santa Fe. We're specifically talking about the right-hand turn from Santa Fe to El Camino Real. I'm just, just making sure I'm clear and understanding you 100%.
I think it applies in a general way to both sides of the intersection, and this may not be the absolute one. You said you've got a few others. But my point is having a pedestrian and bicycle refuge so that their, the bike users and the pedestrians are safer.
You yield. Okay, Councilmember O'Hara.
Okay. I want to start off by saying something that may not be taken as I mean it, but there's a crossing up at Crest that is specific to pedestrians and cyclists. Please tell your kids to use that and not this intersection. That is the safest way to get your child to school. That said, I know we're going to have kids coming from the south and north. You know, hopefully, we can get, we can backtrack on that, and we can talk about safe routes to school another time. But kids should be going up Crest where it is a much safer crossing. Only action with cars is at a red light. Just leaving that comment there. I think that's important for us to acknowledge that this, the best way to protect our kids on this case is to keep them off of Santa Fe. So to this intersection, I think everybody's made a lot of valid points. The public's made a lot of valid points. On the east side, the bollards are definitely a favorable piece. It's uphill, so essentially you're looking at fewer crashes because the speed is very low for the cyclists. I'm going to kind of dive into the intersection, having kind of broken it down a lot. I'd like to, just like the mayor, I'd like to see a pedestrian refuge island in the middle of the north side of the intersection. I'm looking at, I'm sorry, I'm looking at favoring design B. Again, just like all over the city, there are a number of intersections worked out similarly like this. It cuts off the right hook. I'd like to see delayed, delayed red and green lights at this intersection for crossing, at least during school times for crossing, if possible, on the north side of the intersection, on the Santa Fe side, that's the west side. If we could explore the possibility of using a bike crossing light, or bike and pedestrian crossing light to make sure, just for extra measure, as well as some sort of a sign on the south side of that intersection that says, watch for cyclists. On the east side of El Camino Real, there's a slide that's been going around, we haven't, we haven't talked about it, but we, it's probably the only place in the city you'll, you'll see me say, I think it wouldn't be the worst idea to put a curbing in there. And the curbing in that case is actually to inhibit the cyclists. If we were to put it in the center of the slide, which is up right now, the very center on the east side, next to the green, what it will, what it will reduce is the number of times a kid who is trying to keep up with his or her friends rushes the red or yellow light to get across the intersection because his or her friends are halfway across the intersection already. Because they're going to have to go across that, they're going to have to go across that. So they're not going to get the lane in time. So I think any way we can discourage them from cutting the intersection is a good way to do it in that case. That's probably the only place you're going to hear me suggest putting in curb stops.
Can you go through that one more time? I lost you completely. Are you?
East side of El Camino Real.
Okay.
Very east side of the intersection. If you look between the two, do you have the pointer? Can you bring the pointer up on this?
Okay. That's what I thought you meant, but I wasn't sure.
So just for the public to see, on the east side of the intersection, do you have an arrow or a, there we go. So bring the pointer down to the, there you go, right in that space there between the two bollards. I'd love to see a curb stop there. I think it would actually, it's one of the few times you're ever going to hear me say that, but it's one of the times, it would actually keep kids from running across the intersection on their bikes. And we just skipped away from it. And so I'd like to explore that. And that's south side. I agree. That's south side is a tough side, and I don't think we've got a great design across the board. We have to look at car safety as well as bicycle safety. Currently, I think this is the safest setup because it, we have to ideally send our kids up to Crest, get the kids over to the, if they're going up Santa Fe, get them over to the, the north side of Santa Fe. And then the ones coming south on El Camino Real, have you straight shot across in a much safer way. There was a comment before about loading kids up, Abe made it actually, in regards to not putting a bike, a bike, open bike turn lane on a right side of a right turn. And I just look at, when I look at A, I look at all the dangers of that. We're putting them in the right-hand side, and anyone who's going to go straight there, now we have cars looking at their right and their left at that intersection before they make that right-hand turn. We want to keep them looking, knowing where to look, which in this case is going to be on their left-hand side to make sure a cycle is not going to cut in front of them. It also, if the intersection's working correctly, gives the cyclist who is making that right-hand turn a bailout into the second lane, which, God forbid that ever happened. We don't want that to happen, but it gives them more bailout space than if they're pushed up against that curb. So I suggest with those additions, I'll be supporting alternate B. I'll yield for now.
Okay. I have a question, and this is an idea, and I'm looking at the southwest corner. And we do have that one lane that Deputy Mayor Lyons pointed out disappears within 50, 100 feet, somewhere in there. Is, would there be any safety enhancement by building out the curb? In other words, do we need that lane where it goes away immediately? And, and I would want to have it still be, the geometry be sufficient to support truck and fire engine turning, turning lanes. But we do have two lanes you're going into. And what it could possibly do, it might straighten out that bike lane crossing a little more by moving it three, five feet over. And it would, it would cut the distance being crossed by pedestrians on, from that corner to the, from the southwest corner to the southeast corner. And we could put curbing and even, and I would actually put in metal bollards or whatever that make it obvious you can't drive across it. So.
So to make sure I understand correctly, so the idea is to create something like this or no, to just move the bike lane out from the curb?
Move the bike lane out.
Gotcha.
And still, still have the bike lane as a bike lane across, it would be a quote-unquote protected bike lane with bollards going down immediately, but it would, it would be, let's say, five feet further out. That extra merge lane would either half go away or completely go away. And, and it would get the pedestrians going across east, west to east. It would get them five feet further, better visibility from people who are making that right turn. You're going to be further out there and be able, you know, they'd be on a protected island, and not even an island, it would be a protected curb. I'm asking, we have, we have the money to do the concrete work, and
I know I don't.
the lane is going away, but will it make it safer is my fundamental question. So I'll yield, and, but we got Deputy Mayor Lyons before.
If the mayor's making a suggestion that would add a refuge for the bikes, then I would lean in and ask, ask for that to be considered. I could get to a point of being in favor of this. Honestly, that's all that's needed, and we have the money for it. We've had the money for it. It's allocated. It's in our budget. And if we choose today to do something less safe than that, I just, I don't know what the headlines are going to read. I just, I just worry that that's not the level of safety we aim for here in our city.
Understood. Not, not getting too deep into the design tonight.
Yeah.
I think you're, you're, what you're talking about would not be a quarter protected intersection per se. It would be more of a bulb out.
Yes.
At that, at that corner. So the bike lane will still remain a bike lane. We will just drop the, the number three southbound, the short number three southbound lane in lieu of gaining that extra space to create a bulb out at that corner to shorten crossing pretty much on both sides, crossing over El Camino or crossing over Santa Fe in lieu of losing that number three lane. The only concern that I did mention when I was explaining to Deputy Mayor, I still have that, by dropping that third lane, my eastbound right turn vehicles will now go into the number two lane with a concern of rear, rear end. Now, I can easily eliminate that by, by dropping that movement when southbound has a green. But that would have some congestion impact. But again, it's a trade-off for safety versus.
So.
It's certainly something we can consider.
Yeah. I was just throwing it out there for discussion. I, I, it could be an idea. I think maybe it's something we could task to staff to investigate bulb bouts on the northwest corner and southwest corner in particular.
So, so let me interject. We, we don't know if any of these are technically safer than the others before we go telling any of these are unsafe if we go forward with them.
Yeah, that's why.
I just want to, I know, but that's been set up here just now, and I want to make sure that's not clear.
Oh, okay.
That's clear that that is not determined. I hear what you're saying, although I, I believe staff is 100% correct on this. Coming down that hill, you're going 50 miles an hour, you're going downhill. Coming out that right-hand turn, you're going much slower than that. And when you take it out of the turn, you've got to match up with the speed. And what that, basically, that third lane is at that point, is the runway to catch up and work your way into traffic safely. To your point, though, and what I think is a really good option, and I'm going to ask staff a question here. That right-hand turn lane coming off of Santa Fe onto El Camino Real, it looks wider in this picture. Is that the case? Do we have some feet to play with there?
We might. I don't want to go off of this. This is just for illustration. We might, but yeah, I can't.
So could, could we explore without moving into, and I've kind of drawn it here, if you want to look at it, Joy, explore coming out a couple of feet on the Santa Fe side, again, that west side, and bulping out, but when we get to El Camino, coming back flush with the current curb. Is that, is that making sense?
So not to have the bulb out on Santa Fe side, only have the bulb out on El Camino side, or the other way?
No, no, the exact opposite of that.
The other way.
Only on the Santa Fe side, but keep the width so that we've got all those features. It still gives us the, the ability to make the right-hand turn. It forces the vehicles to come to that stop, to observe it, to really slow down, because now it's a much tougher corner. They've got to actually navigate correctly. It addresses the deputy mayor's concerns, but also talks, it also connects with the idea, and with the mayor said too, as far as shortening that distance. And at the same time, it also keeps our vehicles, which are part of the whole equation, safe on El Camino Real.
Yeah, we, we certainly can look into it. Again, another trade-off can be that secondary westbound lane that we added. If we accept that that can be dropped, then that would give us a lot of room to do what you just said. So that can be another trade-off for us to look into. If we, so that small arrow, the secondary westbound Santa Fe that we talked about, the benefits of that is for the flow, the southbound right turn goes into this one, and the northbound left turn will go into this one. But right now, there is only one lane. If we eliminate that, then this whole layout can be shifted and open it up for creating that bulb out on the Santa Fe side that you just mentioned.
Okay, let's explore it.
That's, that's a good option.
I would throw out one caution on doing that completely, and part of that lane is the entry to the retirement facility right there.
All right.
So you've just got to be careful what we drop, what we don't drop. But quite frankly, it might be good to have the bulb out there that you go around, and then you have to pull back off to get to the entry to go into the parking garage. So.
Yeah, again, we don't need to, you know,
Design it here.
finish the design tonight. But yeah, I think I heard pretty loud and clear what, what council wants us to look into. If that's the direction, we will definitely pursue. And if we have questions, we can always stop.
So, so I'm going to, I haven't been yielded to the floor yet. I'm going to make a motion to approve B with the adjustments we've, or you'll follow, you'll watch the recording back, and we'll take all of these adjustments into account in the future design.
Do you want to take a shot at listing out the?
Do you want me to take a shot? I've been taking notes.
Sure, let's hear it.
I think it'd be best.
I have alternative B, and then for staff to explore the following. Add a protected island on the north side of the intersection.
Bingo.
Delayed red and green lights.
Bingo.
Bike and pedestrian crossing lights.
Yes.
Curb on east side of El Camino Real intersection, on the bulbouts on the northwest, southwest corner, and bulbout on Santa Fe southwest corner.
Yes. What was the last one?
It was the bulbout, which is on Santa Fe Drive.
I think, I think when you said northwest, southwest, you covered Santa Fe Drive.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's just one.
Let me just ask for clarification.
And then did you want to include the elimination of the right turn lane, or that would be included with the bulbouts? Correct? Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Clarification, please, Kathy. Northbound and southbound, I think, is what you were saying. Is that correct?
On which one?
Santa Fe, for the bulbouts.
I have the northwest and southwest corners.
Yes.
Correct, yeah. Yep. And then with, with, on those bulbouts, I know it's a side note, but keeping the width of El Camino Real.
And I'll just, I'll add that. Keep width of El Camino Real.
So I'll be.
Okay.
That work? Councilmember Schaefer.
Yeah, I, we'll talk about, I think this is more about approving one of them for tonight, and then when they come back. But we're not going to approve the final design tonight, correct?
Right, not at all.
Yes. Okay, I'll second the motion.
Okay, great.
And Councilmember, I'm listing all of these, not approving a design, but the preferred alternative.
Yeah, I'll second the motion right now. I just, as we said, I don't, I don't personally think that the bulb Just as we said, I don't, I don't personally think that the bulb bouts are significantly safer, but I can, I will extrapolate on that when we get closer to the design phase, the actual design.
Okay. So I don't have anybody else. Got a motion in a second? Let's call a question.
And motion carries unanimously.
Good. Yay. Okay. Shall we talk east side sidewalk? Is that the next one? Did I get, oh, because I, yeah, the, the.
South Coast Highway?
I had the table in front of me and the table has it flipped, so.
Crosswalk.
So are we doing the crosswalk? Okay.
So could I move on this one based on our conversation earlier that we delay this until December 12th?
November.
I'm sorry.
Is that a Freudian slip?
It was. Want to accelerate through the year. November 12th and understanding that means we will be meeting with Solana Beach sometime prior to November 5th, which is when we need to put our agenda out.
I'll second that, but I think Dan, did, did Dan have some comments to make on that one, Chris?
I'm consultant Chris Magdusky here tonight. Dan had to leave for a family event, so I'm here pitching in, so I'm a little bit green on some of the efforts, but yeah, he's going to be weighing in on that with, with the staff at the city, from my understanding.
Did he have any, did, he had something to say, but it was more about the questions for, for, for Dan, but he had something that he wanted to say at that point.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't catch that. Did you catch something that he made?
He was trying to say, but it was questions directly for Dan, but he ended up leaving and so we don't have the questions that we wanted to ask. I don't want to delay certain things if he had, because in our brief, he had very specific things that he brought up, so.
And this, this, the proposed motion, I believe, will give that opportunity.
And maybe I could modify that motion after some thought of what I just said, that we take some time to meet with Solana Beach, but I'd like to have that meeting both with staff, the mayor and myself. And I would hope that the, we could get city council on, from Solana Beach. I think there's a little bit of a cross, cross messaging going on.
And ultimately, it comes back here too, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so. So a motion and a second.
I'd like to be in that meeting.
I'm looking for, yeah.
I mean, how does that? Can we have, can Councilwoman San Antonio have a meeting with them or can, can I have a meeting with them? How are we doing this?
We have to be very, very, very careful with the Brown Act.
I understand, but we just decided that two of us were going to meet and negotiate something on behalf of five people.
We have not, we have not decided anything.
I know, I'm sorry, it was thrown out there.
Be careful.
You're right, I'm sorry, but.
So to, to simplify, I'll go back to my original statement, which is just for the cities to meet. And I think that'll be at a staff level and any other communication we need to have, we can have with our own individual staff members.
Yeah, and to be clear, when Mayor Hebner called me today, I was very clear with her that I cannot decide anything, I'm one of five votes and that whatever was going to be talked about tonight, her request was that we continue this completely and not have any discussion of it tonight. And I said I couldn't guarantee that and I wouldn't guarantee that because whatever we decide will be done in public forum.
Copy and I appreciate that, thank you, Mayor. And I will say that I would like for the staff to have this conversation. I personally do not want to have a lanectomy, so.
Sorry, pardon me, I do, I do know what Dan wanted to say. He said that the south, the Solana Beach CRT extension was not in our grant application for the crossing.
Yeah, and that was said.
Yeah, we said earlier.
You said that.
I appreciate it. So I just, I just want to make sure that when we have the conversation that, that's not one of my priorities and I don't think it's one of yours, but the lanectomy or, you know, getting rid of a lane is not, so when we have that conversation, the, that's kind of the favorite, at least one vote out of five, is that I don't, I don't want the conversation to be heavily on, on getting rid of that lane. So I'd rather, hopefully there's some alternatives maybe that.
Yeah, and, and I'll reiterate what I said earlier. When we went forward to, to apply for this, I made the point that night and I asked the question and got the answer that it is not dependent, the, the grant as applied for was not dependent upon a lanectomy, that, that there was a competing or an alternate proposal in front of Sandag that was four lanes. And I explicitly talked about that last night and I think Dan even went back and reviewed the tape and I think the city manager reviewed the tape and confirmed what I had said and I stand by that. And in my discussions today with Mayor Hebner, I said that, that is and always has been, my heartburn is that I can't, I can't support a lanectomy in this location going up that hill because we'll have traffic going five miles per hour behind a charrow, behind bikes going up that charrow and I'll get roasted in public, you know, with people, we will have a lot of upset drivers. So with that, I think we have a motion to continue this to the November 12th, date certain, and a second.
Do you want to speak?
No, I just want to say, I do not want a lanectomy either, so I just want to, for the record, I said that.
Yeah, well.
I think I just want to reiterate that as well. I think that would be disrespectful.
Well, read the room. So, but I do want to say, this is in my district, I know this community well and I, I know Solana Beach as well. One of the issues that it, that we hadn't talked about and I just want to make sure I'm public about this right now, is anything, any safe crossing, that's two lanes on both, both directions, so four lanes, would require a signal and an overhead light. This is a dark skies area right by the lagoon. That will, that's probably not going to work. We have done other, we have tried to do other things in areas right around the lagoon and the sensitivity to the light pollution right there at the lagoon is pretty high. So I'm just going to say that's, that could be the barrier we can't get over here. If we, unless we can, and I'm, I'm thinking we can come up with something, so I'm still optimistic, so we are still going to meet. So I find that when smart people get together, we can work things out, so I'm optimistic about that. I just want to, you to be aware, there's another light pollution issue associated with a traffic signal and which always comes with a, with a street light.
Are you suggesting that we get rid of the lights at Restaurant Row? Because those are in the middle of the lagoon as well.
Those exist, I know, can't, yeah, they exist. But this would be an action we take to add light in an area that's otherwise dark.
Councilmember O'Hara, did you, I had you up here, I don't know if that was a remnant.
I was just going to reiterate the sentiment, I was at the meeting where you actually said that, so I can vouch for you.
Okay, and one last thing was the Director Nutter mentioned a different, not an RFB, but a also on-demand wolf light, the red light. What was the other?
The hawk signal.
Hawk signal, sorry, I knew it was some animal.
Hawk, it stands for High Intensity Activated Crossing.
Okay.
I think it was invented recently by a professor in, I want to say Nevada or Arizona.
Yeah, because when we, if we were to go that route on this fast and this busy of a road, if we don't have lights in the middle of the intersection, like in, in roadlights flashing, on-demand flashing or something overhead by lane, I, to me, it's, it's still dangerous. You know, I've been in doubt in front of, and I've seen staff members here trying to use the RFB in front of SDA and have cars just about hit them because if you just have those two lights to the side, you get up too far and you forget they're flashing and then they want to go. And this is a highway, so. Dave, did you have?
Oh, this is Chris, but that's okay. I could be Dave or Scott, I know I've been called Scott.
You got me confused with Dan and then, yeah.
Scott's, I've been called Scott the most.
Sorry, Chris.
It's all right, sir. Option A also requires the street light because we must make the pads visible, but we'll consider that, I just wanted to say that for the record. We'll take that into consideration. I realize the sensitivity of light pollution.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second? Any other? No, let's.
And I just wanted to clarify, it was to continue council consideration to the November 12th city council meeting, did that also include direction to staff to meet or was it just continue?
Yeah, direction to staff to meet.
Staff to meet with City of Solana Beach.
Thank you.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. And that motion carries unanimously.
Okay, that brings us on to the last one, which is the South Coast Highway 101 pedestrian, sorry, east side sidewalk and bike improvements. Councilmember O'Hara, are you up?
Yep, so this is, a road with a lot of history on it. I'm going to look to make, to make a suggestion for alternative B. I'm going to get into my explanation first, before I do that. I do think a conversation about the suggested wider, I think it was a 14-foot path, six-foot bike lane, I don't, I think it was buffered, two lanes in each directions and on the other side buffered six-foot bike lane or something similar to that. Is that, does that sound correct what was up there? Something like that. I, the, the catch with that is it's a shared, it's a shared pedestrian cycling walkway. So this grant may not qualify for it. So why do I want to keep having the conversation about that? I'm not going to be pushy about it, but I, if you look at the use of the walking path in Cardiff, about 14-foot wide walking path, it's packed all day, all night. It melds the cyclists that we're trying to protect down there the most, who are the recreational cyclists and the families, with the walkers and runners. And it gives everybody space to coexist along that section in a way that may be an investment of the city. The catch is we have to decide if we want to spend our money on it and in which case we want to put this project down the road for it for next year. But I think that's a worthwhile discussion up here because that is, that is a, and I'm going to, I'm going to go through my explanation of alternative B, but, but that first option is, is worth talking about because this is, this is, I think, oh, you heard it, the Surf Rider Foundation was here, this is the most valuable piece of land we have, right? So how do we make the use of it maximized? And I think that it's worth the discussion of, A, is it safe? B, does it maximize that space? And at the same time, it gets rid of a lot of the clutter that we see down there that is visually not appealing. So I do want to follow up on that discussion as part of this. I'm going to tell you why, if everybody doesn't go that way, why I support alternative, alternative B. I think it was said, but I fully, wholeheartedly agree with it. Nobody, when you go down to the, when you go down the stretch of, of the 101 to walk, you go down there to walk by the ocean on the side of the ocean. And you very unlikely have gone down there to walk in the lagoon. If you did, you probably went to the lagoon and walked on the beautiful new trails that are there, hiked in these canyon, went over the pedestrian bridge, the highway media loop. That's, that's the way to absorb the, the designed way to absorb the lagoon. You're probably going down to look at the ocean at the stretch of land. So the sidewalk on the east side, there's no, there's no demand for it. The demand is on the west side of the road. I fully support removing the bollards and the hard stops. The, the data shows they've not been successful. I think when we move to the west side of the road, the dual site, the, it's not a dual cycle track, it's, but the cycle track where they're facing each other with five feet of space is a great amount of space. I do suggest on that side, bollards only and bollards spread very far apart and no curb stops. Again, the curb stops have been a problem. So with that, I'm going to, I'm going to lean towards alternative B, but I would like to follow up also and include the not, not designed or not written up version of that for discussion because I think maximizing that asset in the city should be a priority. And I don't want to spend money on something that is, because we have the money, that maybe we can do something better than on something that could become a key centerpiece of our, our community. I mean, if we do this right, this becomes an attraction to the city, not just, not just a means of recreation and transportation.
Real quick, point of order for 10 o'clock, going beyond 10.
Oh, good point.
I yield a motion to continue.
Let's just do a little, little, is that a second I heard?
Second, yeah.
Okay, I got a motion in a second to continue past 10 o'clock.
But no later than 11:30.
I think.
No later than 11:30.
No later than 11:30?
That's fine.
Who made the motion? Was it?
I think it was Schaefer made the motion. Marco seconded.
And that was to continue past 10 o'clock, no later than 11:30.
Yep.
Okay, motion carries unanimously, thank you.
And I yield the floor, so.
Oh, then Councilmember San Antonio.
I am, great points. I, I really like what you put forward, Jim. Councilmember O'Hara, some great, those are some great, some great viewpoints on that. I do like that. I mean, we, sorry, I'll just tell you what I like. I like alternative B. I think in my staff briefing, I, when I walk down the 101, just like Jim said, I, you want to be down by the beach and to what he said about this could be a spotlight for our city. That stretch of coast is my, one of my favorite parts to drive from Swamis to Solana Beach, Solana Beach to Swamis. It's like, that is so beautiful. You've got the lagoon on one side, you have the ocean on the other and it's almost like you're on the water. To have that, to see, when I, when I drive on the coast on the weekends, you see people using the, running in the bike path, which is unfortunate, but they're running, you know, they're doing their marathon training, you see so many people running down there from, you know, when I, like I said, when I drive from Swamis down, it's, it's a bummer that they're, they're riding in the bike lane or, and they're trying to share and people are riding all around them when you get to that point, but man, what a, what a great thing if you could have that, you know, essentially a kind of like a boardwalk in our town, just similar to what Carlsbad has. I just think it's such a, such a pretty part of our, beautiful part of our town. It makes a lot of sense to me to try to move everybody from the east side to the west To me, it makes sense. I'm, I'm definitely not in favor of the curb stops. Bollards, I, you know, again, I'm, it's a toss-up. I get it if we have to put them up there, but if you could space them out even more, that's great. It's a visual cue. But I do like the, that idea that Jim put forward of a, that one that wasn't drawn up. That, that's a pretty interesting thought, so anyways, I support alternative B.
Okay, Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you. I will, I will support B as well. I think it's the least amount of congestion as far as a lot going on with all the other ones. And then it also allows for the maximum use on the west side. It keeps the bikes coming, that are going from south to north, fluid. It gives us the widest lanes beyond the parking, gives us the 11 feet versus the 10 and a half. It's the best, in my personal opinion, the best option. I would say that, again, I would appreciate looking at, if we did have extra money from some of the other areas, to put that over and even just looking down what Steve had presented earlier, that was a, a unique way of thinking about it and giving us that, just that much more space. So that's what I'll be leaning into.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Lyons.
I am also in support of alternative B. Really, my focus on this is to emulate best practices. I think this alternative B is, is a best practice, not only for safety, but for what we have as far as continuity, it best interprets and uses the configuration that we have north of Chesterfield. And it, it provides continuity. And so I'm in support of alternative B and I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve alternative B.
Okay, and. See, I walked the, the west side there. It was interesting. Yeah, I agree, you know, it, it was actually a lot nicer than I thought. You know, you, you still felt like you were somewhat in there, but I don't see a whole lot of traffic down, walking traffic. And I think we're going to continue to have people walking in the bike lane, which is probably fine, right? In other words, so I, I support B too. The one question I have, B, if you look at that 10-foot sidewalk, I guess you updated it on the, what's up on the screen right now. It shows the existing is the three to five-foot wide walking area. The grant we are getting, is it enough to widen the walking path to 10 feet? Because that's actually increasing the amount of capital improvement we would be doing.
First thing would be to, to apply for a scope change because as was presented, the walkway was shown on the east side. And hopefully we will be able to convince Caltrans. I'm optimistic, it's, it's a justifiable change. And then. And then, we have 1.9 million. What I'm concerned with is the change in the layout of the street, removal of the, because if we keep the wheel stops or not keep the wheel stops, all the striping on the road would have to change. And it's such a precious property of the city that I don't want it to not look nice, so I really do like to slurry the road before implementing new striping on it, to have a clean, nice road. That's the part that I cannot really cost us, the amount of damage that will cause, basically have to repave the whole road with this. So we will do with the design a good cost estimate when we come back to council, to, to give you a better idea of if, I, I feel it should be achievable, but with the prices going up in every pavement rehab project, we're getting, you know, bids much higher than we anticipated, so it's, it's tough to say if it covers.
And with this, on option, alternative B, which in concept I love, it's just a question of cost right now for me, the 10-foot wide sidewalk, would that be asphalt, or is it asphalt concrete, or would it be DG?
It's, I, I have to look, because I do know the DG was done, the dunes area was done because it was, because of the, you know, the, the tides and the, the water coming in there. So maybe we can do like a combination to have a little bit of a permeable pavement, DG pass, so water can be absorbed and then have some sort of a harder surface. Yeah, I don't want to go too far.
Mayor, we'll run the numbers and look at the material types and see what's.
Okay, so there's, there's more detail, but in concept, I, I support this. I really support the, the dual-direction bike lane on that side, because it's actually a continuation of the one further to the north. The other reason I support it is that bicycles don't stop for safety, they swerve, and that added, what, three, four feet over what's there today? Because they're in a pretty close confined area with people on three to five feet of, of walking path, and a surfboard or, or a kid or a stroller can step down there so quickly with just six feet to swerve, you can't always get out of the way. 10 feet will make it, I believe, make it much safer for people in the bike lane. You know, we're keeping the shero there, which, again, is why I'm adamant that we need, since we need to have the shero for what I call the, you know, the hardcore riders that are going 20, 25 miles an hour through here, they're going to want to stay out there in the road. If we went down on a lane diet in here, or up the hill, we would have a shero going up that hill, and I think it's just not going to work for traffic. You're going to have people going around slow-moving bikes in a single lane. So what was the other? I support taking out the berms. I'd be interested, it's a cost issue for me. I don't think they help. I would keep the bollards in there at the, the lower density like we discussed, so that we don't have people cheating over into the, into the bike lane. And let's see, do I have anything else? Other than that, I, I support what the, the motion is right now.
So.
Councilmember O'Hara.
So I'll, I'll second the motion to support B. Right now, we're, we're just sending it forward as is. I want to quickly see if there's a reason to talk about the option that's not on here. I mean, if we've won it tonight, we send it forward, it's just sending it forward for design, we're not committing any money. But I very much think, and partially because the, the design with the 14-foot wide, I don't know if we have it, so to put up, but with the 14-foot wide sidewalk, is actually safer on the east side of the road, if you looked at that? I believe you had a, there was a design that had a, a separation. Buffer, sorry, thank you. By, a buffer in it, which is hugely safer in the long run, to be able to have a buffer in there. So I, I, I want to know if, if now's the time for council to talk about it, or if we should be bringing it back to talk about it at a different, I know, I, I know, I know that this is an area that has screwed up once, and we don't want to screw it up again. We want to get it right. So.
Are you suggesting taking a couple of feet away from like the 10-foot sidewalk and?
No, you can, you can, so if you go away from this grant, right? But I'm saying, let's, let's, we're looking at a, we're looking at a crown jewel of Encinitas, right? This is the, this is, at one point was the only pristine, until we did, well, all the stuff we did to it, the only pristine section of coastline left, right? And now we're talking about improving it to closer to what people probably remembered as, I don't know what the right way to say it is, but looking at improving what's there, which is not working. I don't want to do it just because we have a grant, I want to do it right. And that's what I'm saying, should we have a discussion about it? And maybe, maybe this is the best way to do it with the grant. Is that the best way to do it? And I think we need to have that discussion, because this is such an important piece of real estate for the, for all, the entire community, not just the cyclists, the pedestrians and runners, the cars, the, the surfers, everybody, just a beachgoer. You look at the success of the rail trail path, and, and we traded off stuff to get the rail trail path, for those people who are probably against it. I, I agree, some of the trade-offs were trade-offs that we'll never get back, but we traded off, and, and in that case, people enjoyed it, they're, they're out there using it. We have, we have to look at this section of road and say, how can we get that result here? Is it by chasing a grant? And, and I don't think this is a horrible design, not what I would, I love down there, but, or can we do better? And is it a better, is there going to be a better return on investment by looking at what it takes to do it ourselves? And, and I'm not, I'm not leaning one way or the other, but I want to make sure we have that conversation, because to me, this is, this is our chance to, to really look at Cardiff and, and take away some of the eyesores, bring it back to the, as pristine, beautiful area, and we just talked about the, the dark skies component of it, right? Like, people really value the simplicity of this section of road. And if we can do something to enhance the enjoyment of it, that actually makes it visually simpler, I think we have a responsibility to look at that. I know it's an impassioned push on this discussion, but I just, I love this section of coast, and, and I just think it's so valuable.
I'm going to recognize the city manager.
Yeah, so thank you very much for that idea, Councilmember O'Hara. One of the things, here's what we could do. So tonight, what we're asking for is authorization to pursue the funding. So we know that we already have to do a scope change and ask for that with that. So what we can do is, first of all, find out if this even qualifies, and if it does, what we could always do is, we could see how we could supplement making that bigger. So if, let's say they do agree, agree to a re-scope, and, and putting that, so, you know, because it was east side, moving it to west, we could then, and let's say it's the eight to 10, we could then go ahead and look, we can still use the grant money for what it is, but then we could get a cost estimate to look to see what it might be to supplement. So at least then you're, you're going for the grant funding, and we could look to supplement.
Sure, I would love that. My, my concern with that is, I, I think we should look for the grant money. I agree, 1,000%. My concern with if we try to widen the sidewalk is that we are now creating a sidewalk slash cycling thing, and this is, this grant, as I read it and has been explained to me, is only for a pedestrian sidewalk, right? So if we go away from a pedestrian sidewalk into a multi-use path or whatever, it, we no longer will qualify for this grant, which, which I'm okay with, but I want to make sure that's clear.
Sure, and I mean, I think the other part is too, is that if that's something council wants to, you know, obviously look into, what we can do is, we can look at some different designs on, maybe there's a way to separate a little bit, because you are right, this is definitely for pedestrian improvements. And I remember I was here when we built the coastal rail trail, and, and, you know, parks manage that and things like that, so maybe we can look at that. So I think, I like what you're saying tonight, is I think it sounds like council members all like alternative B, that's where we could get some grant funding. But as we said, right now, we just want to accept the funding, and then we can, we can ask Caltrans what we can do and things like that, and, and come up with some other options that we could look at with council, and additional funding if it took it. So we're kind of leaving ourselves a little open to that, but at least we have a design going forward, or at least a concept going forward, I should say.
Appreciate the explanation, thank you.
Councilmember San Antonio. One thing, one thing I want to clarify is that the, the, the scope change request is not a one-time thing. So if it's a council desire to, to start with the Caltrans conversation with the wider shared use path, it's no hurt in trying, it's a form and a bunch of exhibits that I have to submit to Sacramento, we can start with that. If, if Caltrans say no, then we still have this option to try again. Again, if that's first council priority.
Deputy Mayor Lines.
Oh, I, just real quick. That's all right. I just wanted to say that I agree with you, Abe. I mean, if this is our crown jewel, if this is like, you know, I agree, this is such a great piece of coastline, that if we have to slurry seal, if we have to find money to make it the best it is, so when we roll it out, it is the best, then I guess we have to, we'll, we'll find that money, or we'll try to find that money where we can, because I, just like Jim said, I, I want this to be used the way that Carlsbad uses theirs, people running down it, and people are so happy, it's like the place you go, like if you're going to start at Swamis and do your run, and start there, and go down the coastline, it is the place you want to go. Who knows, maybe it brings more tax dollars here. It's just, it, this is such a great spot, that I, I would not want it to be wasted on just, oh yeah, we, we got it done. If this can be something that can be a highlight, another highlight in our city, then great. So I just want to say that.
I've done a lot of conversation about this proposal with my constituents, so I want staff to know, and I want the public to know, that a lot of folks I've talked to are in support of the pedestrian being moved over to the west side. That's where the pedestrians want to be, they want to walk by the ocean. So if that helps with our, at request to the, to Caltrans, our public is really the majority in favor of it being on the west side. I, I want you to know that. That's my information. But the reason I, I wanted to speak is, the mayor said something earlier that confused me a little bit. He said something about the berms being impacted? Is that what you meant, the berms? Because we have the, the shoreline preservation berms right there.
No, no, the parking berms, the, the.
Oh, forget to say, good, thank you.
Nothing on the sand.
We're not impacting the actual shoreline preservation berms, right?
I believe the westernmost boundary is not changing, and this 10 feet would actually extend into the asphalt where it was, and, right.
That is correct.
Thank you.
I think that was what I was going to talk about, was the, the 10-foot being such a huge improvement to the overall flow and look, and, and I think it would make it so much better. But with that, I think we, I've talked about this enough, we have a motion in a second.
Clarification, it was for alternative B. Did it include limited use of the bollards and removal of the curb stops?
Who made the motion?
I believe, Deputy Mayor Lines.
No, it didn't, I didn't, I didn't explicitly know that you said those things were in the project?
No, everyone, all the council members talked about that, so I was asking if that was in.
Well, and they're, they're removed in the, in the diagram too.
They were not in the proposal, so the removal of them just didn't make sense to me, right?
So with regards to removal of the wheel stops, I have to check our, our guidelines. I do believe where we have parking, no, no, I'm talking about future. Yeah, in the future, it would, in, in the east side, it would be removed, we don't need to keep it, because we will have a two-way protected. If that's what, what mayor intended, or, or you meant mayor, remove all of the wheel stops even on the two-way cycle track. Because on the two-way cycle track, I do have to check the code. I believe when you have the country flow approach in a two-way, you need to have a curb separation, but I, I might be mistaken, I, I can be mistaken, I can double-check the code to find out. I do know when we have parking protected, we need a curb.
So I support you coming back with what is approved by code, and, because that's what we need to look at as far as what's approved and what's the safest.
So the alternative B is the motion.
I, I withdraw my second. I make an alternative motion, support alternative B, removal, with the removal of curb stops.
If possible.
If, if possible.
Yeah, I don't want to tie our civil engineers, I mean, our traffic engineers' hands on this, but if you say if possible, maybe.
No, as long as I have cleared which, which direction is clear, if the motion goes through, I will do as much as possible to remove all the wheel stops without having any kind of a code issue. Obviously, we don't want to make the city liable, but if we can remove, I will remove as many as the wheel stops possible within alternative B. I believe we still have that other alternative on the side, the, the shared use, which we can discuss, I guess, further later.
And ultimately, that this is a design, detailed design issue when it comes back for design, that.
Absolutely, yeah.
I, I believe, Jay Schwarm, I believe both Abe and Dan indicated that on the sidewalk side, on the west side, that the possible curb would be needed based on code, but the rest of the other ones are being removed.
Absolutely, the east side, I'm pretty sure, yeah, the east side can be removed for sure. On the west side, I would have to look into it to, to see how much.
Next to the sidewalk.
Okay. If we can have that language if possible, I just don't want to tie your hands. Come back to us with what's, the code says is approved, is approvable.
I'll second, Jim.
Okay. So it's, Joey made the motion, Marco's seconding it.
Yes, so it's a substitute.
It's a substitute motion.
With a limited use of bollards and removal of the curb stops if possible. Correct?
Okay, so I have a substitute motion. Nobody else speaking? Call a question.
That motion does carry unanimously.
Okay.
And then just, you still have two items to take action on, and that was number one, which was authorizing the city manager to accept and administer state and federal funding, et cetera. And then number three, which was adoption of City Council Resolution 2025-54.
Any discussion, otherwise I'll take a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Call a question.
That motion does carry unanimously.
Now we're on to item 10B, and we've got about an hour and five minutes. And if we're ready, we'll go straight into a staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager Matt Wodelski, the Principal Engineer for the CIP section. With me is Carlos Valdonegro, Senior Engineer. We have Blake Lotus from Rail Pros, Chris Magdosku down on the very end as our city manager, excuse me, city engineer, filling in, being lost. And then behind us too is Larry, Larry Shaw with Rail Pros. Finally, we're going to talk about the other mode of transportation, we're talking about railroads. So we have an option here for grants to pursue for projects that are within the city. So back in September, a notice of funding opportunity came out from the FRA for Federal State Partnership Program for projects to improve safety and reliability along railroads with inner-city passenger rail throughout the country. The authorization came out, as I said, in September of, September 22nd. There's just over $5 billion available in this opportunity. Grant applications are due on January 7th of 2026. Might seem like a little while away, but we know the holidays are coming, so we wanted to get here as soon as we could and try to get council to get us some direction. From the grant, as I'll just kind of go through quick, there were eight categories of eligible applicants, states, compacts, Amtrak agencies. The City of Encinitas qualifies because we are a public agency. Eligible criteria, what the grant is specifically looking for, projects that replace, rehabilitate, and repair facilities and equipment along passenger rail specifically, is what I wanted to say, was number one. Number two, and you'll see why it's highlighted, improve inner-city passenger rail service performances, the third one, expand and establish new railroad passenger terminals. As is found footnote six, that came with criteria number two, if I just read it for everybody to understand, a project that enhances safety, including grade-crossing improvements, is eligible under this criteria, but you have to demonstrate that passenger rail safety performance is improved. So when we saw that, that's why we wanted to take note of that. From pages 18 to 32 through the report, I don't want to. to go through them all, but there's a long list of things that have to be put into this application, the funding and the summary. We have to do eligibility criteria where we're going to have to explain in, in multi-paragraph details of why we qualify for the criteria. Detailed project location and descriptions are going to be needed for what we have to do. We have to talk about an implementation and management plan of how we're going to do this and when we're going to do everything and how do we make sure we're going to do this. The benefit cost analysis is basically for, for not, maybe if everybody isn't familiar, a benefit cost ratio is what benefit you're going to get over what something costs. And the idea is if the number is higher than the number one, then you have more benefit than you have more cost. So these are, a lot of times have to be done with grants and it is required in this, this grant application as well. As far as environmental compliance, right now, all of our projects have gone through the SEQA process because they have no federal funding on them now. Since this is federal funding, if we get this grant, we would have to have the project comply with NEPA standards. So we would have to quote-unquote federalize the projects for, for NEPA, not just SEQA as we go through this. So now the fun stuff we want to hear. The city has three main railroad projects going on in the design phase for the city right now. The Lucadia at-grade railroad crossings. We have a citywide quiet zone implementation project which we're pursuing. And we also have the Verde undercrossing improvement project that actively is in, are in the design phase now that the city is working on. So if I want to talk specifically for, to refresh everybody's memory, the Lucadia at-grade crossing project is proposing to install two pedestrian and bicycle crossings through the Lucadia corridor where Lucadia Boulevard is to the south and La Costa Avenue is to the north. The first crossing we're proposing is at Grandview Street along the railroad to, from Vulcan all the way to 101. And the second crossing is at Phoebe Street connecting the North 101 to Vulcan Avenue. Again, pedestrian and bicycle only. These are not vehicle crossings. And right now, this project is at a 30% design. We have prepared an application that we submitted to the CPUC. We hope and expect to get the answer back probably March, April of 2026. The citywide quiet zone project, which we have basically is installing safety measures at four intersections in the city in order for them to be safely improved so that the, the train doesn't have to sound the horn as it goes through the intersections. Forwarding from south to north, we have E Street Crossing. We have the D Street Crossing in downtown. We have the Encinitas Train Station and we have the Lucadia Boulevard Crossing. So the project proposes all four of these crossings to have installed safety measures constructed in there so that more safety measures allow the train to legally not have to sound the horn going through. Right now, we are at a 50% design level on this project and we anticipate design to be completed by fall of 2026. Oops. And then the last project, the Verde undercrossing, this is a crossing down in the Cardiff community next to Verde and List Avenue, along Santa Lejo Avenue. This is a pedestrian undercrossing similar to the one we have at Swamis and it's one we have at El Portal. So this project is at 100% design. We have completed the design and the permitting phase. It just went through the planning commission back in August and it's ready to go into construction. So to summarize, the projects we have, three of them, Lucadia at grades, the quiet zone, the Verde undercrossing, the statuses as we have. For the Lucadia at grades, we have right now a range of six to six and a half million dollars. For Lucadia, for the quiet zone, 12 and after 13 and a half. And then Verde, as we see, 17 to 18 million dollars. And this slide, I want to say, is slightly different from what was in the agenda report because we had to put more updated information in there. So just wanted to make sure everybody saw that. The requirements of the grant are that the federal government's only going to fund 80% of the cost. So the city has to come up with a 20% local match. So as we see for each project, you're looking at 1.3 to 3.6 million dollars that the city would have to come up with for the, for the local match, as we said. Right now, there is not any funding in any of the projects for a federal match right now. Just wanted to let the council know that. And as was said in the report, we have three projects. So we can do one application where we have one project, two project, or all three projects. They all can be bundled into one application. And our consultant has, has done these before and has expressed that, that it's certainly possible and a very useful idea if the council desires to do that. And there is money in the quiet zone project to fund the grant needs for the project. So to the recommended actions, we would seek council to give us direction on which projects we would like to pursue and then authorize the city manager to accept, administer, and fund the FRA grant for the selected projects. I guess just to review, the grants are due on January 7th. A 20% local match is required and the city has three projects. And with that, we're eager to listen to questions and, and answer questions and hear comments.
Do we have questions of clarification first?
Yes. If we do get qualified for the grants and we get all three of the grants, do we, if we don't have the match, can we return the money with, with no harm, no foul? Or if we get the grant, does that make what, make sense? If we don't end up using, like again, it's 7.6 million dollars total for all three of them. So if we were to go for all three of them and let's just say we got all three of them and we, after that point and decided that we, we can't really quite match all that, can we give the money back?
If we get selected and we decide we're then not going to pursue the project, we would, we would have to give, we would have to give that back.
That's, we're okay to do so, right? It's not like we're going to get dinged for some future grant process or any of that stuff.
I, I can't be sure, but usually when you don't accept a grant, or when you get selected to have a grant and you give it back because you're not going to fulfill, usually agencies don't like that.
Got it. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lines.
Oh, no. Sorry. I'll wait until after public speakers.
Okay. And I think we have seven?
Wait, just a quick question. I, I heard you mention that we, we have the funds for the quiet zone in, in the reserve. Is that what I heard correctly? Did I not hear that correctly?
We, we have funding in the, in the, in the quiet zone project to fund the grant, the grant applications.
Oh, application, okay. Sorry. So you said to fund the grant, but not the application.
To fund, preparing the applications, but not the match.
I felt like it was Christmas for a second there. Okay. That, that's hugely helpful in this discussion. Thank you for the clarification on that. That's it.
And then a quick, along the same lines, when would we need the funding and basically which fiscal year?
When we prepare the, the project management and implementation plan, we would have to specifically state, you know, that if, if we get selected for a various project, that the city would have to put the funding for the local match in there. And since we know the, the applications are going to be due in January of 26, you know, they didn't say specifically, but probably I would assume six to seven months for a decision to be made. So probably by July 26, we would be able, ready to have to put local match into the projects.
So it'll be our next fiscal year?
Next fiscal year.
Okay, cool. With that, let's go to public.
Okay. First three speakers, Ellen Burr, Steve Pearson, and Mark Hendrick.
Good evening, still. Number one, I think in the future, it would be nice to know how many grant applications have been made for each project. And if they have failed, why have they failed? Because doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result is a sign of something. I know for a fact that five years ago, we had a Chrissy application for the Verde undercrossing. We did not get it, but we paid $75,000 for that application. Now, I do not know how we can do three applications for $77,000. There is something wrong there. I assume we can recycle some of the information that has been used in many other grants in the past. But I, I really think at, at this point, given that they are federal grants, and if you look at what has already been failed since this administration came in, I don't think we should be looking at too many eggs in too many baskets. I think we should pick one, and it really needs to be the Lucadia crossings. There is no question that that is where this should be going. And part of the problem is double tracking. When are they going to get around to the double tracking? And what impact does that have on any plans that we may or may not have? I mean, it makes no sense to go and do stuff and then have to rip it all up after we've paid for it. So please, in the future, try and get some more information about what's worked and what's not worked with which, which agency. I don't know how you can possibly do a decent job for $77,000 when we paid $75,000 five years ago for just one of these. And please, just, just go with the Lucadia crossings. Thank you.
Steve Pearson, not here. Mark Hendrick. Okay. Scott Campbell with time donation from Molly Hitlean, Steve Siznokis, Carol Heil, and then Joy Shepherd.
Okay. First off, a quick note. There's been a lot of talk about the, the sidewalks on the east side of Coast 101 and saying it's not wanted, not used. What does that really mean?
Yes. Scott, you do need to be on this subject, not.
Okay, okay. Well, it just means that that land is not valuable. So I asked the council to not pursue these grants. And the reasoning is it's a low-bet proposition. And Ellen just made some objects, some, she made some comments on that. In this, in this staff report, I actually, I encourage the staff to continue their creative grant seeking. And we need, we want the free money, but not all the grants are, are good. This one, I, I don't think we have a good chance. On page 16, it talks about eligible projects. And this is basically to repair and replace infrastructure. None of these is really, has to do with the trains. It has to do with what we want to do around the train tracks. And, you know, right in three, expand or establish a new passenger rail service. I don't see how any of these projects improve rail or increase rail or anything like that. Once again, it just improves people crossing. Next page, please. And on page 17, there's another paragraph, and it talks about benefiting inner-city passenger rail transportation. Once again, none of these projects actually benefit the rail. We can say safety and we'll get, we'll talk about that, but that's, next page, please. So there, there's a lot of details on this about what is going in the application. And we have to have a lot of quantifiable data. Quantifiable. Those are no numbers. Not, not made up. You have to have data that, and you have to have a research and actual experiments or professionals or something. You don't just pull up a number out of your hat and say, this is it. So once again, we need to know how this is going to change ridership data, failures and safety incidents. Okay, the crossings is going to have, that does have a relationship there. Can we measure that though? I don't know. How many people are crossing right now illegally? How many people are getting hit? How many people are having near hits? We don't know any of those numbers. We have no data at all. We're making it up. So this tough, and this is an application. We're going to make the numbers up and, and cross our fingers. I, I again, I don't think we should do this. How does this application increase trains and increase speed? It, it doesn't really do it. Reduce delays. If we have accidents, those are delays. That's kind of a negative win. I'd really, I mean, our application's based on we're going to have less delays because less people are getting hit. Once again, how much time? Quantify it, please. And we actually can do that because we do know the delays of some of the people that have been hit. And we can measure that and hopefully can get in there. Let's go to the next page. Page 36 talks about selection preferences and what's going to be picked. And this is basically why I don't think we should do this. Just read this, you know. How is this going to improve the financial performance and service frequency of the rail? It, it just really isn't going to. It's, and we're stretching. We're not fixing a bridge. We're not adding a double track. And that's something else, you know, we should talk about on the Lucadia crossings is, are we going to put in crossings and then Bamo? We have double tracking and all that stuff gets ripped out? We need to know that. We've been begging for double track information for years and they're sitting on us. So I think if we're going to go for this, emphasize the safety aspect that we are, you know, in the orange, rail-related trespassing, we're going to have to focus on that. I just don't think it's enough with the competition. Now one of the, this is a competition. There's other cities and agencies doing this grant. There's 20 billion. There's one restriction that says only 20% can go to one, one particular state. Do we know how many other applications are going on in California? And are we going to exceed that 20%? And so once again, our odds of winning seem really low to me. I don't go to Vegas. I don't bet on sports because your odds of winning are, are too low. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't put any money on this right now. I support all these, all these projects. I just don't think this is the way we're going to get the money for it. Thank you.
Steve, Carol Heil, and then Joy Shepherd.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. I'm up here to talk to you about the project. I live 100 yards from the, from the railway here between D and E. Pretty close. I'm approaching this from the mental health side of things. Yeah, safety is the topic. Is, these intersections are old. The noise is crazy. I want to share something personal that I haven't really shared with very many people, but I retired two years ago this month from the fire service. When I retired, I went through mental health issues regarding PTSD, sleep deprivation. I worked in a, in a department that were extremely busy all day, all night, one of the busiest in the entire county. I went through magnetic brain therapy where my brain was shocked for one hour twice a day for almost 30 days, trying to realign my neurons so they're aligned with each other so I could sleep. When I retired, I thought it's going to get some rest. The trains are insane. I don't want to be up here complaining, but there are a lot of issues with mental health, sleep deprivation, that these trains are, are affecting the community. And I'm representing a large group of people in District One that have wrote apparently 300 different letters to you guys in the last couple days. And with VR, our vacation rentals, biggest complaint is a train. With the noise factor, with the railroad crossings being outdated. I mean, there is so much that is, that needs to be brought to attention here. My recommendation is to follow suit with the action items and, and move forward. I think it's a great asset to the city to quiet this down. We live in a neighborhood that I sleep with all my windows closed, all my doors closed. I sleep with an, an app that makes noise. I can't even enjoy, you know, what we hear from the ocean. The other night, I heard the ocean waves breaking. It was amazing. And all of a sudden, my wife who works late at night has to silence her computers on Zoom calls from the east coast to the west coast because of this train. It's, it's, it's out of control. These trains have federal, federal rights to be blowing certain amount of time through each intersection. Well, I think their arms are really tired because now they're just holding the horns down from Santa Fe through Lucadia. It's almost like one continuous sound, especially the freighters at night. So I encourage you to please, you know, follow suit with pursuing these grants. It'd be a great deed and, and help out many people in the community. So thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Ayler's, council members, and city staff. My name is Carol Heil. And I stand up here tonight after six years of advocating for pedestrian crossings in Lucadia. And I stand up here tonight after six years of advocating for pedestrian crossings in Lucadia. Thanks to you, the city staff and your support, we're further down the road than we've ever been. Now, Lucadia respectfully asks that you choose to apply for this federal grant for our desperately needed crossings. These crossings meet the federal requirements to, to enhance safety under the criterion that demonstrates improvement to inner-city passenger rail service performance. Not only does it enhance the safety and efficiency for the low-sand rail corridor, it greatly enhances the safety of our residents or for our residents. It would improve on Encinitas Climate Action Plan by reducing vehicle trips. It would improve safe mobility, no matter, no, no more climbing the fences. It would improve pedestrian and cycling connectivity to businesses, beaches, and neighborhoods. And it would improve the efficiency of all trains traveling through Lucadia because there would be less accidents of people crossing the tracks. Applying for this grant would be a huge step in realizing these at-grade crossings. With the council's support, please authorize the city manager to apply for this FRA intercity railroad project grant. With your help, we can make these crossings a reality, not just a dream. Thank you. I know I'm not supposed to ask a question, but I do have one question that perhaps you can ask Matt after this. If you choose to apply for all three, is it a winner-take-all or can they just pick one or two?
We'll ask.
Okay.
And actually, we can respond to, it's oral comments we can't, but public during an item, we can, as I did earlier, we ask questions of people who came up. And Joy, I think, next, right?
Hello again. I'm still Joy, but now I'm representing Cardiff 101 Main Street and the Cardiff Town Council. The Verity Undercrossing will provide essential mobility and safety improvements for our region, particularly Cardiff residents, visitors, and children at Cardiff Elementary School. The enhancements to the rail system will connect Santa Lyahoe Campground, beaches, which we know are the crown jewel of Encinitas, and surfsports, the bus line on the west to Cardiff downtown, Cardiff Elementary School, and densely residential areas on the east. Without this crossing, there's going to be a two mile, there's a two-mile stretch from Chesterfield to Santa Fe, and people are going to walk across unsafely. So this great safety, it's la-la-la-la, okay. So let's get to, onto the history. The Verity Undercrossing has long been established as a priority for the rail corridor. During the 2016 to 18 era, Coastal Mobility and Livability Study Working Group told, the city staff told this group that the Verity Undercrossing was a done deal. The Rail Corridor Vision Study reflected this. This group included individuals who went on to become council members, current and future planning commissioners, and representatives of all three 101 main streets and town, relevant town councils. The Rail Corridor Vision Study came out of this CMLSWG with a good roadmap and a complete consensus on the priorities at the time. The city has invested significant funds in the design of Verity Undercrossing and subsequently hosted CPPs, which were well-received. The Verity Crossing, Undercrossing is now shovel-ready. Funding projects in the rail corridor are expensive, and the city can't do it alone. We ask that you aggressively pursue grant funding, both federal, state, and regional. It's a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
I conclude speakers.
Okay. And so I have Deputy Mayor Lyons up first.
Yeah, thank you, speakers, for hanging with us. You're very passionate about this item, and I appreciate that you stayed to give us your thoughts. I hope that this is a no-brainer for us because there's such a small investment that we are being asked to make for with a huge upside. $77,000 for three projects where we could get $6 million total estimated proj, this is the total, I'm sorry. I'm not going to be doing math at this time of night, but we can get millions of dollars, tens of millions of dollars. I'll just put it like there. What I understand, Matt, if you could shake your head, yes or no, is that each project, each of these three projects will be judged independently? That we could win one, two, or three, or none?
Yes, so each one's judged individually. We just put them in the same applications, less paperwork for us, less paperwork for the FRA to look at. They appreciate that. And each one is judged on its own merit, and they can say, we like this project, we don't like this project, we'll fund this portion.
Thank you. We have such a need. The rail has been such an impact on all of us. As you can see, there's important projects here in, and that affect our whole community, especially Lucadia, especially District Two also, and especially District Three. We're all impacted. What the nexus is to safety is the more we can get people to cross the tracks safely, the better the rail will run. I have been appointed by Sandag to be the Low-Sand Metro Link representative. And through that role, I know that all the numbers, Scott, that you were asking for are available. We know what the numbers are. We know what the delays are. And when there's an unfortunate strike, and there are, and we know it, we know it, we've seen this, and we can do better. But when there's an unfortunate strike, the whole corridor's down for hours and hours. So this is really tied to rail safety. And this is our treasure trove in that we're never going to have this opportunity again. This money is only here just because it's been diverted from another federal focus. And it's, it's apparently available to us now. So if we don't go after this for all three projects, I don't know if we're going to have a solution for funding any of these projects. So for $77,000, I'm all in for all three.
Excellent. Now, Councilmember O'Hara.
Thanks, everyone who stuck around for this. This is a much more important issue than it might seem at first look. Diving into this, you know, my, my other council members will have their input on this. I'll say this, the citywide quiet zone is a public health and safety issue in this city, affecting thousands of our residents, not just, they even, well beyond the 300 emails we got, thousands of our residents, nearly 10% by my account, and all of our businesses along the 101. Lucadia Act Grade, to me, is the completion of streetscape. It's economic development, it's public health and safety as well, getting people across those tracks in a safe manner. And it, it, it's just a no-brainer. When I look at the whole, the whole piece of all of this, I, I come to, I come with two questions before I dive too deep into this. First staff, the 30%, 50% design, what percentage will be when you return, when Rail Pro returns the design in, is it October? Where will we be at at that point? Because we can't build till we have that, the Rail Pro design back, correct?
Which project?
Either the Quiet Zone or the Act Grade improvements.
The Lucadia Act Grade, again, is at 30%. We're waiting for the CPUC to come back. We are hoping, you know, March, April, the, the longest time they're allowed to take is 18 months. That would take it to September of '26. We're really hoping and believing that the answer is going to come in early of '26. Once we get the final decision from CPUC and we get approval, then we can move to finalize design of the Lucadia Act Grade. We're hoping fall of '26, we can get that, that project final, final design.
That's, yeah, then that's what I was referring to. Similarly, with the Quiet Zone, roughly, from what I understand, right?
Correct. Fall of 2026.
So, so looking at these, and again, this will be for council side. I, I look at the return on investment and I look at our budget. And I dove into our budget, I looked at what we project to have, I think, next year, our investments, our, our increase, increases and incoming taxes. And I look at this as $8 million. We don't have $8 million. We won't have $8 million next year. So, and this is for council debate, we will have, I think, $4 million. And so I'm going to prioritize what I think we need to do. And then leave it to you guys to decide whether you want to pay the $11,000 for the extra third project. I believe, first and foremost, the Quiet Zone affects the most people in the city, and we need to prioritize that. So I want to vote for moving forward in the citywide Quiet Zone. I believe Lucadia Act Grade improvements are equally as important. Again, they are economic development and public health and safety. I will caution the people of Lucadia that we are going to have to look into wayside horns because if we, unless we can get Carlsbad to join us, you're going to have a horn for every one of those crossings. Your horn noise is going to increase if you get the, if you don't get the, if you get the Act Grade improvements and don't look at wayside horns. And I, I just to, I know that has been a challenge for the community. I think we need to revisit staff with the community, if we do get this grant, to, to see what that looks like. And I assume that will add on to the cost of this project, right?
Correct.
So, so that would be my second one. Only because of return on investment, I would put the Verity Undercrossing as the third priority in this. I think it'll eventually get done. But I just don't see us, even if we get, if we get all three of these, having $8 million, I see us prioritizing the few. And I leave it for the rest of my council members. I'm not going to make a motion to decide whether we want to risk the additional $11,000 and go for all three or not. And I'm, I'm not leaning one way or the other, but I absolutely am going to push to have the Quiet Zone and the Act Grade improvements, number one and number two in there.
Okay, Councilmember Schaefer.
No, thank you. I would agree with, well, real quick, for Ellen, the reason that we can do this is the bundling. You asked about why we did 75 before and 77 this time. The first one costs $55,000, then it's $11,000 for two, there's $11,000 more, so 66, and $11,000 more for all three. So we can get all three for 77 in that case, and that benefits us. Real quick, do we have any answers on the double tracking and how that would?
The best we've heard from, from Sandag is 2035, they're supposed to be looking at design.
So would we be required to improve that crossing? Or would they do that since, because they're going to be doing that, if they're double tracking, they're going to be increasing all the crossings across?
What, what we have said in the, in the application to the CPUC for at grades, and when we talk about Quiet Zone is, you know, the city can't stint here and wait. So we want to move forward with our design. And if we install at-grade crossings in the Quiet Zone and the double tracking comes through, Sandag's going to have to be responsible to upgrade it with the double track.
Got it. So that's spoken for.
Yes, and I was just going to add to that, that usually, and to the speaker's points, or great points, because that's, we do this for a living every day, that you get designed for ultimate. A lot of times, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, they, we know it's coming. So hopefully, our designs will accommodate that already. But if it doesn't, they'll be on the hook to do it.
As if we can't move it to the five, right?
Yeah, right.
Anyway, so, yeah, I think the, the Quiet Zone definitely affects the most residents. I think the Act Grade Crossing is, is right there as a second requirement. And then for, and I'm not going to say a mere $11,000, but for $11,000, we're not sure which ones are going to get approved or not going to get approved. And so I think it's to our best interest, and having been to Vegas, I think the, the gamble is worth putting that, that money on, on the $11,000 and seeing what we get back. At that point, I think it's up to us as a city, if we say, hey, we have the four to do one and two, but we need a whole, almost another four for Cardiff. I'm not sure if we do a, a special fundraiser, see if we can get the people to, you know, to get behind this or whatnot, if people really want it. But I think that we go for it, see what we get back, and at that point, we'll make the, the hard decision of, of good luck and, and good work. So I think it's important that we go for it, for the full 77. We see what we get back, and at that point, we'll, we'll separate the, the good from the, the different if, if we figure out at that point that it's, it's worth all three or whichever ones we get. So I'm, I'm in for all three.
Councilmember San Antonio.
I can appreciate what you brought, Scott. I, I like the way you dig into it, but I, if Joy says there, that she's got the numbers and the numbers are there. She is our Sandag rep for the Low Sand, so I, I trust that Joy's got those numbers. I think I'd be willing to risk some of these funds for the residents. But, you know, I personally, I agree with Jim. I, there's two here that I see totally, I, I do agree, Quiet Zones are a big deal. My shop is right across from the Encinitas train station, just about as far as Steve lives, from on the east side of it. So those things are gnarly. I, I stop my phone calls, I stop talking to customers when they're right in front of me, I stop talking to them. If I'm on a Zoom call for here, I, I stop talking, I mute my, my mic. Those, those horns are sizable, so, and I do see that there is, I mean, my parents live in Encinitas Ranch. I can hear when I'm there, I live in Leavenhein, I can hear the train from there. So I can only imagine, you know, living, sleeping here in Encinitas, or right by the train and hearing that. So it's got to be really loud at night. I do, I do agree with you, though, that, Jim, that there, the Verity one, I, you know, I, there's a lot of money there. And to try to find all that money at one time, or at least, you know, to come up with that when these get approved, I think that the, number one should be Quiet Zone, and number two, at-grade crossings. I think those, we can, we can find that money. So for me, I, I'm in favor of doing two and I guess, you know, skipping, skipping the three or putting that on hold. Not that, I feel Lucadia is, is, has a need for it right now. There's nowhere to go from Lucadia to La Costa. So I, I think that they really need that crossing somewhere over there. Let me see my notes here. Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll yield for right now.
Okay. And I'm, I'm a firm believer in investing in basic infrastructure here. I campaigned on, on, certainly on the Quiet Zones and the at-grade crossings as being basic infrastructure. In many ways, you make a similar argument for Verity, although it's more expensive. I'm, I'm really looking for the experts here, Rail Pros, so I'll look to you right now, to give us, did Rail Pros work on the application for Verity back whenever that was done? And staff can comment on this or Rail Pros?
No, Rail Pros did not work on the Verity application.
Okay. And, and who, did, were there any other applications that we attempted on any of these projects before that we lost or didn't make?
We've applied twice for a Chrissy grant on the Verity Undercrossing project. I want to say 2019 and then 2022. Both were unsuccessful. And then in 2024, there was a railroad crossing elimination grant we applied for. We did the Quiet Zone and Verity, and both were unsuccessful.
And were those through FRA and through similar federal funding structures?
Chrissy and RCE were federal.
Federal, okay. And do they have the similar criteria? And in other words, are we likely to win or lose on this one? And I think I'll ask both of you this question.
The criteria is somewhat different because it was talking about like eliminating railroad crossings, which was where the Quiet Zone could come in. But since the grant on this one here, they were specifically looking at safety. They were specifically looking at the preferences here of, is it on an Amtrak line? Are you improving efficiency? So there were some differences. And then, you know, other reporting requirements and how you score your application is different from every grant. A lot of them are similar, even if they're all federal, they do have different criteria of evaluation at times.
And I would love to hear from Rail Pros about what you think of our chances of, of the match between our needs and, and the grant application.
Right, so, as I've been, it is a competition nationwide, so going to that eyes open. But I, I think there's a compelling story here. You know, you're on an Amtrak line, which is a big focus of this grant in particular. There's safety improvements, there's enhancements, and, you know, we built benefit-cost ratios that were very favorable for projects on, much less than that on just, on, you know, reducing delays, improving safety. You know, there's a dollar figure for every train you stop up and down the corridor every time there's an accident. And you're looking at that return over 30, 50 years. There's a really compelling case for this particular grant on these projects.
And the Amtrak corridor is one of the busier ones in the nation, too?
This, this is the second busiest one.
Second busiest. Second busiest, yeah, only the second. So, so there's a reason to put the money here, because the operation is here, too. So in your, in your experience, and I guess, tell me about your experience. Have you done a lot of these types of applications?
So we worked on state and federal. I was actually able to get a Chrissy grant a couple of years ago for Sandag. I, I wrote that grant myself and was awarded the money on that one. Very similar format, different criteria. So, familiar with the federal format. And we also have other people in our staff up in Pacific Northwest who have been working on, about two decades on federal grants specifically. She couldn't make it down here tonight, but, you know, we have a team that's very familiar with these grants.
Okay. So it sounds like a reasonably good match. I agree with the prioritization that's been discussed. I won't go into that again. I, for an additional eleven thousand to make three point four million potentially, or three, sorry, seventeen million? Seventeen million, sorry. Gee, I, I think that's worth, I, I concur with Councilmember Schaefer. So, do we have a motion yet on this?
No.
I will make a motion to approve all three.
Second.
And I'll yield now to Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Well, thank you. I'm glad to hear the motion and the second, and I will be supporting this. I, I was going to say that if we, if we didn't use eleven thousand dollars to go after the, the cost of the Verde, that it's, the cost benefit analysis there wasn't there for me. I mean, it's like, it's a real benefit to us to just pursue it. But I also wanted to add one more thing, and maybe this is valuable to rail pros and to staff. We have such a need, and I said that already, I'm not going to harp on it, but the fact that we have these three projects, and they're all different, and they're all solving the unique situation in the parts of town where they exist, is compelling, the mass of projects that we have. So, the story we have is that we have a lot of issues. We need assistance with funding to resolve associated with the, with the rail. And it becomes a more compelling argument than, by putting all three projects forward. So, that's another way to look at it. The other, the other thing is, I was preferably involved when we went after the Chrissy grant, I guess the more recent one, twenty twenty, maybe. It was right after I came to office. And I do remember our staff saying, it was hard to find just the right fit with that grant for what they were looking for, that Verde wasn't, maybe we had to kind of make it work. And so maybe it wasn't as good of a fit. I, I, I'm confident in what I've heard you say here, that rail pros kind of understands this grant process. And, and you're saying it's a, it's, it's a good one. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Hara.
I'm good with the recommendation. I'm glad we're going for all three. I will caution council that if we were to get item two and three, we could not afford them. I do believe item one and two, we could figure it out. But item two and three together, we'll not be able to afford them, and we will have to turn one of them down. And that will be that. So there is, there is more risk than just the eleven thousand dollars there. I think that's an important note. I'm going to sport and roll with the council on this. I did have a question. Chrissy grants were mentioned. Obviously, we're not talking about Chrissy grants, but have we applied for any Chrissy, Chrissy grants out there? Chrissy grants, if, in case you want to let people know what they are, but they are the railroad.
Last time we did was, was in twenty twenty-two, if I remember correctly.
And are we monitoring to see what they're coming up with?
Always. We always keep our eye open. We look for the, for the crossing elimination, the Chrissy, the, the safe streets, everything. We, we try as best as we can to keep our eye on all the grants coming out.
Super. I appreciate that. That's it. Yield. Thank you.
And Councilmember Schaefer.
Yeah, just real quick, so we can get going, is, I agree with Deputy Mayor Lyons, that the amount of, just amount of parking that we can get on the east side of the tracks that would allow for all of our beaches to open up with the majority of people trying to get to the open beach space. We don't have the access that we, to the, the big blue thing out there that everybody wants to go to, especially during the summertime. So it gives not just the west side of the tracks a lot more access, it gives the east side sort of for parking and more availability to, to businesses, to, to beach, to everything. So, I think if, if we see that we're looking to be favorable, and however much time we have to spend it, it would be worth, at that point, again, campaigning or going through and talking to the city on, on specifically making sure that we have the funds at that point. So I, I don't, I don't, if we do get the funds, I think it's important to, to let the city know and see if people want to respond and do something about it. If not, then we, as a city, can go away from it. But that at least give the people a chance, so.
We can see if the senator has some backers to help us out on that one. It's right by her house.
Mayor, if I may, just wanted to say one thing that Blake brought up, is if we need to, or if we want to, when we do our implementation and management plan, we could stretch the funding out for Verde, maybe to a year or two after what we need to. If we, that would give us maybe two or three fiscal years to possibly come up with all of the twenty percent match.
Very good. Look at that.
That's great. That's great news.
The federal grants are different in that it's not.
That, 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 that is why you hire rail pros, not rail amateurs, okay? So, just want to always go with those pros.
Well, let me just follow up by saying, maybe I'm more of a gambler than I thought. But winning all three projects is a problem I want to have. You know, if we are able to win all three projects and bring tens of millions of dollars to our community, I think that's a, that's a success. And we'll figure out how to move forward from there. I don't think it's a closed door. It's an open door. Thanks.
Okay. So, motion second. Let's call the question.
Motion second.
Cool. Five zero. Okay. So, we've got fifteen minutes left.
Two items.
And two items. And how many people do we have speaking on ten C?
None.
None, none right now on ten C or D. Okay, that's good. Counsel's pleasure to go after ten C first. And if we have to continue something, it'd be ten D. I just want to check. Okay?
Ten D is like three minutes.
Well, we'll get, we'll get to that bridge when we, you know, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
Well, might have to do an extension to do it. Okay. So I, I just got a little coaching here that ten D may be really quick. So, think about it, yeah. I'm prepping them. I'm prepping them. Go.
So, I would say, we, we have a full presentation prepared. We've already pulled that back, sitting in the back, realizing that we've gone through briefings and shared the history of the sculpture loan program. And so, we've got a, a pared-down version, and I'm fortunate to have Arts Manager, Collette Murphy, and Commission of the Arts Chair, Katie Fox, here to do that. If you want to give the, if you're ready for the presentation, we can do that. You're good? Okay.
Do we need it?
I don't need it.
Well, I don't need it.
Yeah, that was the question. If you don't, we've given.
Anybody in the audience need it? No, okay. So, with that.
I just want to say, I'm sure it's amazing. I'm sure it's amazing. But I don't need it.
If, if I could, sorry, if I could add, just, for those that want to see it, or if anybody's watching tonight and wants to see it, it's, it's part of the package, has been for, for a week or so. So it is available for those that want to see it.
And, and in all reality, this, this just helps the, the artists, it helps us, it helps everybody involved, and it's the right thing to do. So it's, I'll say motion to approve.
And I'll second. And I want to thank the Arts Commission and staff for working hard to think this through very carefully and bring forward this recommendation.
On the staff recommendation is changes from the loan term from two to three years. And then, Dave, just for clarification, are there other modifications that council's approving?
The commission made a number of recommendations, and the initial request in the staff report was for council to give direction. It could be as simple as, you agree with all of the commission's recommendations. If you have any modifications, you could share those.
So I have one comment.
Of course.
I'm, I'm going down to your presentation on, it's towards the end, almost there. And it really gets down to, when we had it before, we gave you direction to go look at setting a threshold on the survey. But this literally gets rid of the survey, so the threshold becomes moot. And the one thing I have to do sitting up here is, I have to answer if I'm using the money well. And if the people out in the population look at the art and go, I don't like it, and, and it's such a low, and I think the analogy I used that night was Amazon.
Amazon.
You know, a one is the lowest possible you can get. And if I, if somebody rates are, if the, the survey rates are sub-two, I, I really question whether we should be putting it out there, because we're going to be the ones approving that several thousand dollar approval for just the stipend, not even, you know, we're not buying it, and thank goodness. But I, I thought it was appropriate, and, and that's what the motion was, and approval by past council. And I agreed with that. So the one recommendation they're making, and it's on page thirty-seven, no, it's somewhere right at the end there. Anybody help me find that?
If I, if I could.
There we go. Page forty-four is recommending elimination of the public survey, and therefore, I assume, it's eliminating the council direction from before to, to have a minimum threshold. And, and we actually ended up not accepting two of the, I think it was two, right?
Yes.
Two of the pieces of art. One of the things to remember about this art is, it's not commissioned directly for us. It is art that the artist already has available that they can, it's outdoor art. And so in some ways, it's a little bit leftover. And so I think there's, there's need for some minimum threshold. Otherwise, we're going to end up accepting whatever. And, and it, we, we don't have a choice. So, and, and I really like the fact that we let the public, who's paying for it, get to, to participate in the survey and set some minimum threshold. So, I said my piece.
You have threshold now?
No, don't have to. I, I, we can look to, the, the direction was for the commission to do it. Yeah. So, but it became moot when they took that mechanism out. So, we, this council could modify it, can change it. My recommendation would be to put the survey back in and ask, and reassert the direction.
Can I take one, one shot out, Mayor? Thank you. Would, would share that, there were conversations in, over the different times that we met, about the survey and being a little bit of not wanting to, to judge based on, on a survey. And so this process was representation from each, each of the communities, a jury, a jury, creating a jury pool, and then a lot of community seeing the artwork. That was the question last time. It was like, okay, we had a survey. But the second time we did the art, we actually had the artists come in, so the council asked questions. And we had, we had a very good council meeting, in my opinion, and the discussion. So we also took from that, hey, we, we want that to be part of the process. So, this, this now has a simpler rubric based on, are you meeting the, 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 the public message for, for art in the community? From there, public input, seeing it, could be art night, it could be pictures of the art here as part of our, our presentations. And then public coming, being invited, pulling them out for the commission for the arts that, to discuss the art. And then they had that other option of coming to the council meeting also. So that, that's why, I just want to share, that, that's why the survey was, was being taken out as a, being more specific with the art and the community.
Yeah. My, my, my concern is, and I'll yield to Councilmember O'Hara, my concern is, I go through a survey every two years, and I need to be a good steward of the money. And I do believe it was very reflective of a needed control, if you will, on what we were accepting. And, and it went through the jury before. And yet, when it got to the council, I thought the, the survey was a very useful tool for us, and people are used to doing it. But that's my opinion. You know, art's in the eye of the observer. So, with that, I'll yield to Councilmember O'Hara.
And I think you and I are a lot, a lot aligned in what our question was in this. Mine was actually about the jury panel selection itself. It, it seemed a little obscure. And it didn't really, like, three members from the commission of art, and I'm not sure if there's a, if there's a, a way to do it better necessarily. I'm not suggesting that. And I know I should have a solution if I'm asking a question. But it seems like that could be defined a little bit more. Three, three members from the commission of art, obviously that's a good piece of it. Five community members, one from each of the five Encinas communities, each appointed and recommended by the corresponding 101 town council, community organization. I, I don't know that that, I don't know how that guarantees us expert or representative opinion in, in that process. Yeah. And so I was, I just would like to see that vetted out a little bit better in this process. And it's to your, to your point, to get the best thing that everybody wants, rather than, you know, we picked five people who, like, this is, they're keen on, they're all keen on art, and they're all the, they're the only, the five people who were interested. I don't think that's the case in our city, but just, just for playing devil's advocate. So I, I'd like to see that vetted out a little bit better.
Okay. And, and I would add that, when I did look through the surveys last time, it was the public comments that were the most telling. There were themes through there, even better than the voting. I thought the public comments were, you know, the little notes they threw in there. But, so.
Outside of, so, sorry. Outside of that, I mean, I, I certainly motion to approve the recommended action of moving things to three, moving this to three, a three-year plan. I, I think we save a lot of staff time, where we save any, we give the artists more exposure and opportunity here. And we let the public kind of settle into something long enough to enjoy it before we pull out the rug off from underneath them.
Can I just hop in here real quick? I realize we have four minutes. And the slide deck that you received is not the presentation, because my rule is, don't read slides. So there's so much to add to this conversation that I did not get a chance to add, from a lot of work, a lot of insight, a lot of speaking with the public. To your point, Mayor Ellers, the new rubric, the new criteria can be quantifiable. You can get numbers after, after it's been used. The, the real positive aspect of the public, the survey was the, all of the public comments, which we reviewed and could apply our same logic to. And the public comment is still in our process, that people can write in, leave those comments, and also be received during our commission meetings, during the council meeting. And, and Dave's idea of the large-scale photos being displayed in civic buildings gives people perhaps a full week to be in contact with those sculptures, whatever finalists there are, five to ten, as opposed to the public survey, which pitted sculptures one to, side by side to each other, two sculptures. And honestly, that begot a lot of vitriol and potentially favoritism. If an artist is really well-known and has a large network, they can ask their friends to weigh in on the survey. We spoke with a survey researcher. She looked at that survey. She said, this is not effective. Whatever, whatever information you're getting from this is not, you know, there's an art form to get the information that is valuable to make a good decision that reflects community values and community wants. So again, we did a, a deep dive to really understand what those values are. Likes, dislikes, those comes and, they come and go. Of course, the communities have different feels. Anyway, I just, I, there's so much work here that, that do address your concerns, and I wish I had more time to engage them. But I, I didn't want to just not say anything.
Does the ultimate selection, I mean, ultimate approval come back to us?
Yes.
So, if we want to move forward with this, I'm, I'm okay with that. I will, with that caveat that, that we want to be very careful that we're reflecting some popularity in this. It can't be, you know, forcing unwanted art on neighborhoods.
I think the commission completely agrees with you.
Okay, good. So, do we have a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, motion, and I definitely would like to see the jury portion of it more vetted out when that comes back as well. Super. Super.
And I can share that in the prior jury panel, all of the members from the communities had a connection to the arts in some way or another, as well as being really invested within their communities.
Well, that's a discussion, right? Do they need to have connections to the arts, or is it for the whole community, or just the arts community, right? And that's what we have to kind of vet out in this. What is the process? Is it for, should our school kids be involved? They have their own opinion on art. Should the people who come here have, be involved? They're not all artists, but they may have a say. And so I think that's why I want to get a better feel for the jury panel, like, to make sure that it is a broad scope. It's not just people who know the ins and outs of one thing, representative of the entire community, surfers, professionals, artists, athletes, everybody in between.
Yep. And we can always change it again in a few years, so, you know.
Absolutely, yeah.
This is not concrete-in-the-ground issues. This is, it's a program.
Yep.
You know, we'll see how it goes. So motion, and I think a second, I don't see it up on the screen.
Yes.
I think I seconded.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Councilmember Schaefer moved, and the second was from Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Okay.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Do we have?
Thank you.
Do I need a motion to extend five more minutes?
No, let's just do it. Do we need a motion there?
Do I need a motion to extend five more minutes? We're, okay. So we're starting, well, item 10D. And this is.
Item 10D is the introduction of an ordinance, and it is to amend the city's conflict of interest code, and it is just to change titles and those designated employees based on changes that have occurred during the budget and since the last update. So changing position, titles, those types of things, adding new titles.
And did, is this a public meeting, why it's not on consent calendar? It needed to be?
It's the introduction of an ordinance.
So it had to be an item, but it's not a public meeting, per se.
It's not a public meeting.
Okay.
I'd like to move approval.
Second.
Any public speakers?
There are no public speakers.
Okay. And anybody want to speak? Sounds like no, call a question. Bam.
Motion carries unanimously.
And that takes us on to, there are no informational, there are no council-initiated. We'll do AB 1234.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember O'Hara and I attended the Santa Leo JPA yesterday morning, and everything's going well, except for we, they just took over the Walke water reservoir up by Encinas Ranch, and they found a couple leaks that are going to require a $700,000 to $800,000 improvement. So that's a pretty significant cost, but they found some of the money from another portion, but it was necessary, and it increases the benefit of our recycled water significantly. So it's a strategic win overall, but it's a tactical loss, if you will. So that's it.
Anything else? Councilmember O'Hara.
Oh, yeah, I also attended that meeting. Couple shout-outs. First one is to the Encinas Ranch Golf Course, who received an award for recycled water usage, state-recognized award. Probably have a proclamation for them. I think that's something we should do to kind of compliment them on their outstanding stewardship there. And I want to give a personal shout-out to Mike Thornton. Mike is the general manager of Sedgpa, and he is retiring, and he has done.
Wow.
He has done the impossible down there. I've watched that place grow from when I lived up on top of the hill, you know, a couple of buildings into an incredible facility. I go there, and I wish our, I wish our council chambers were as amazing as their boardroom. And the way he runs that group, his staff is amazing. He's done an incredible job. He's been an asset, and I'm sorry to see him go, but I'm grateful that I got to work with him.
Yeah.
And I'll report that on Monday, I attended the Los An MetroLink board meeting as the Sandag representative. The only thing I'd like to report from that is that they have the funding from FRA for the 11th and 12th lines that will come to San Diego, which will get us closer to where we were pre-COVID. They're working on the 13th trip, and once they get the 13th trip refunded and re-engaged, then we will be at pre-COVID levels for our rail coverage. They do need some subsidy on that funding, and we're trying to figure out how to get it. And then this morning, I attended the Encina Wastewater Authority meeting, nothing to report.
Yeah. And I attended the same Encina wastewater report and, or meeting, and we talked about potentially leasing the South parcel. It's the same thing we talked about in the, I reported last time. Thank you. City manager report.
Yes, thank you very much. Just to let the public know, we will be bringing back the item on immigration at the next council, the next regular council meeting on November 12th. As was spoken before, we have done the Know Your Rights campaign on the website in English and Spanish. We have submitted Freedom of Information Acts for every event that has occurred here in Encinitas. We've also managed to get a contact at Homeland Security, which I call every time that we have an incident. They have provided us with official statements, which I've provided to council. Our legal is exploring different lawsuits and legal mechanisms to, that we may be able to join on. Also, we do currently have a letter drafted and an MOU drafted that will be presented to council on the 12th for approval, because that was the direction to bring that back. So I wanted to let you know that. Next up, too, don't forget, next Wednesday, we have our workshop with the Planning Commission on AB 2011 and SB 6. That'll be at 6:00 PM. And last but not least, since we only have a special meeting, we are doing a safe trick-or-treat at Pacific View, of course, on Halloween, from 5:00 to 8:00. So that'll be a nice new event that'll be held there, and thank you very much.
City attorney report.
Very briefly, and following the city manager, so my office will be bringing back options for joining potential amicus briefs.
Okay. And city clerk, anything?
No, we're clerk.
And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you for sticking around.